So I'm calling the Select Board meeting to order on May 31st at 6:30 PM. So this is the first in-person meeting I've been to in a long time. So if you hear things like roll call votes are, I'm going around the room, it's because we're so used to Zoom meetings, it's hard to get up. Okay, we're going to start off with public comment. Is Liz here?
I can't see who's in the Zoom audience.
So Chelsea, you see this person? Do not see, yeah, I do see Liz coming, yeah. Okay. Liz, assuming you can hear me, would you like to come over and speak to us about the taxation aid committee? I just wonder. Liz? Liz, you just need to unmute. Liz, you should be unmuted.
Hi, sorry, was I supposed to do this differently?
You're doing fine. So hi, I know that you had a meeting this afternoon and pointed to Mr. Stivers, you'd like to talk to us briefly about where things stand with the committee?
Yeah, thank you, I'd like to, let me just grab my note.
So introduce yourself first, please.
Okay, thanks. Hi, yeah, my name is Liz Kesselman, I'm Chair of the Taxation Aid Committee, so I'm here on behalf of our committee. For those of you that don't know, the committee was born out of a Massachusetts regulation back in 2002, I believe, that allowed for towns in the Commonwealth to provide tax relief aid to seniors and disabled residents in the community. Our committee lay dormant for many years, but was revitalized in 2018. So we have actually been giving out tax relief for, this is our third year. So the reason why we're interested in talking with you all is because essentially the taxation aid needs to be funded 100% by donations. That's part of the stipulation. There's a small trust, and given that the need has been great during the pandemic, we would like to actually ask for consideration for some of the ARPA funds because our trust just quite frankly doesn't have the asset level to meet the needs for what we would like to be doing. So just as a little history, the first year we gave out was 2020, fiscal year 2020. We actually gave out for seven applicants, $750 each. There is a maximum of 2,500 that can be given to any applicant. In 2021, we increased our applicants to nine, and we were able to give $1,000 to each. And we met this afternoon, we've been in the process of trying to figure out what to do. We have 12 applicants this year, and we, in an ideal world, would really like to be giving out at least $1,000 to each of them. So essentially, with a trust that's very limited, it's a little over 30,000 in assets, we're in a position where we really would benefit greatly from any help from ARPA. And just to give a little color around it, the average age in town, or the average amount of time that our 12 applicants this year have been in Southborough is close to 40 years. You have to be in town for a minimum of five years to apply, but it's been close to 40. These are long-term residents. Five out of our 12 applicants this year, their Southborough property tax represents 40% or more of their income. So the need is very great. Last year, when we gave out our grants, we included in our letter other opportunities that one could take advantage of in the community. You know, Jeff Klein from the Assessors Board is part of our committee. We've worked with the senior center, we're trying to get awareness of other ways because you can receive taxation aid and other things. Our program is very clearly defined, there's an application that we rebuilt to make it very user-friendly, and it's very transparent. We're essentially in a position of giving out as much money as we possibly can. So we'd really like consideration to help us with this year's giving. If you do the math, we're in a tough spot, we'd like to give out at least 12. It would do a major dent in our trust, but we'd actually really like to ask for any consideration above and beyond to help us for this year and for next year. I mean, I understand there's a big bucket, but you know, we'd love to receive 20 or 30,000 to put immediately into the trust. The other thing is, we are actively, as a group, our committee is working on finding other ways to replenish the trust. A big initiative that we plan to undertake after we finish this giving cycle is to talk to some of the charitable organizations that serve our community. So the banks that have charitable foundations, and perhaps even greater Worcester County. Because you can see, we believe in this really strongly, and the need is there, but with donations only, I believe you all received a spreadsheet from Brian today, we're taking in just a couple hundred dollars a year. So we're not bringing in donations yet of the level that would support what we'd like to give out. And of course, we had pandemic, but assessments were going up. I'm sorry, are you looking at something on a screen?
No. Are you trying to do the 12K by June 30th?
No, we don't need it by June 30th, we give in the November tax bill. It's applied to the November tax bill.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome, your questions about the committee or what we're trying to do?
No?
None here.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you so much for your contribution, really appreciate it.
So next, Sarah, can you come up to? For those who don't know, Sarah is the Department Head of the Youth and Family Services. For the past four years, there's been an award given to a deserving person in Southborough that is named after the former Department Head, Laurie Sugarman Whittier, who was, what, 30 years, 40 years along. And then Sarah stepped up and she retired in 2016. So the award has been presented this year, and Sarah is going to tell us who received it.
Yes, thank you. So as Kathy said, my name is Sarah Castle, and I am the Director of Southborough Youth and Family Services. Our department provides mental health support, social services, prevention and education programming for the community. And today is May 31st, we were here to see you at the beginning of the month, and we're concluding Mental Health Awareness Month. And Mental Health Awareness Month is a time that we really try to be attentive to the prevalence of mental health conditions that exist in our communities, to support those who are experiencing mental health challenges, to promote services and supports that exist, and really to collectively work together to decrease stigma that exists around mental health and accessing services. And so as Kathy had stated, Laurie Sugarman Whittier, in 2016, retired as the former Head of our department and dedicated her time and energy to working here in the community for over 30 years. And in her 30-plus years in Southborough, she provided support to countless numbers of families and individuals, and really advocated for the values that we promote during Mental Health Awareness Months all year long. So this is why our Youth Commission Board named the Laurie Sugarman Whittier Wellness Award in her honor to really, to grant to a community member during the month of May, to someone who has promoted the same mission. So I appreciate the opportunity this evening to come before you to tell you about our recipient of this award this year, Kathy Wilson. And Kathy is the school psychologist at the Mary Finn School. Kathy has worked in Southborough for 11 years, and like Laurie, has provided support to many of Southborough's youngest residents and their families. She's a dedicated employee, and per the report of the families that we've heard from, has provided exceptional service. I can attest to this firsthand, that her kindness and warmth and comfort has been very reassuring to families, always has, but especially in the last few years where it's been exceptionally difficult and been a time of uncertainty. And I would just like to share something her principal Clayton Ryan had said in response to her receiving this award. Clayton says, "I've worked with many school psychologists over many of my years in education, and Kathy Wilson is the best. Kathy is one of the most student-centered people I know. Her commitment to making all students feel safe and secure is unsurpassed. Kathy is a strong advocate for children's mental health and inclusion. She promotes individual differences and how we can all learn from one another. Kathy is an expert at helping students understand their own feelings and the feelings of others. It's a true honor to work with Kathy Wilson and have her at the Mary Finn School." So as Kathy, this Kathy, shared, we have already presented the award to Kathy Wilson as the recipient of this year's Laurie Sugarman Whittier Wellness Award, but we really appreciate the opportunity to publicly acknowledge her contributions to the community and to highlight what an asset she is to our community.
I wanted to thank you for inviting me in, and thank Sarah and the Southborough Youth and Family Services and Southborough Commission for this award. When I started working at Finn 11 years ago, I had the privilege of working with Laurie Sugarman Whittier and Sarah. And so to receive this award that has been named for her is truly a privilege, so thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think a lot of Finn students will be happy to hear that you have this one.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So next, our agenda is to show our appreciation for Marika, who is leaving EDC on June 1st.
Tomorrow. One more day, one more day.
So for those who know Marika, I don't know anyone who has said anything other than what a great employee she's been, what an incredible amount of time she's spent, and what else she's accomplished, and a supposedly part-time schedule of EDC. So I solicited from people who know her very well, things that she's done over the past year here, and it's a ton of stuff. So I can't really listen to it, I could be here for 20 minutes. But long story short, we have seen a lot of grants in this town because of Marika's efforts, I mean, lots of grants. The tents, if you see over at the restaurants, she helped me build. So there's just nothing I've ever heard that isn't anything but one of the losses coming to the town. She's going through Japan, she's offered to help out, I think, for a while, but I'm not sure if she's going to do that with the time difference. Somebody's going to be up late or early if they're going to make that work. But I mean, it's just page after page. So this is what John Wood says, "Never felt like a part-time employee, always went the extra mile, continuously strove for collaboration across committees and boards, trying to solicit input, expert at finding money, and always available even on off days." So she was just really into this, and it's going to be sorely missed, and it's going to be a heartache to all of you.
Well, I want to thank you all, and thank you for your kind words. It's been a great opportunity for me to work for the town that I live in, and I think that's part of the motivation for me to go, you know, go beyond. I just want to thank the wonderful group of volunteers that are at the Economic Development Committee. They are dedicated and putting in a lot of time and effort, and they've always supported me with every idea I brought up with, any help I needed. And I also want to shout out, give a shout out to Claire Reynolds, who I know is not an EDC member, but a volunteer and resident of this town, who's been, you know, very helpful in applying for some of these grants. So I can't take full credit, it was a joint effort, but I've thoroughly enjoyed working for you all. And I know I'm leaving for Japan in July, but if I, you know, people want to reach out and need anything, can't find anything on the shared drive, please reach out, and I'll be happy to give my.
You know, we have learned how to work remotely pretty well.
That's true, yes.
EDC, hear me.
Yeah.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Just thank you, Marika, I know you've been a big part of the EDC and coordinating the business meetings that we've had lately, we have been extremely successful. So a lot of kudos to you, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Kathy, I'd add also, I follow the EDC pretty closely, and it's clear that Marika has been sort of the motive power that has kept that process moving between meetings, a lot of things come up that need to be followed up on, et cetera. I think a lot of good things have happened in terms of support of the business community, not only the grants, but a variety of reinforcement of business activities in town. Great debt to you, thank you, best wishes for success internationally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, and thanks for kind of laying the foundation, and hopefully we can continue with the path that you found now.
Thank you.
Sergeant McCarthy? So Andrew, do you want to introduce him as far as he's been?
Sure, so. Yes, Sergeant McCarthy, I saw on the internet that you had a trip to Washington D.C. somewhere?
We did.
Okay, could you speak about that a little bit?
Sure, so a group of us from the PD try to go down every two years to Washington, D.C. for National Police Week, which runs from May 11th to May 17th. And May 15th is National Peace Officer Memorial Day, that was brought in in 1962 by President Kennedy. We go down there to honor the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice to the communities.
Thank you, I just wanted to express my appreciation for you and for Oregon Actur and the group of Southborough Police officers that took the time to do that.
Absolutely, our pleasure.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was great to see some of the old guys together again as well.
Oh, that's great. Thank you for the support.
Thank you.
So next, we are going to start a tree hearing. Mr. Lloyd, you want to come up to? Absolutely.
Evening.
Good evening.
So for those who aren't familiar with tree hearings, the Select Board is charged under state law with the tree. So we're here tonight to basically talk about six trees that have been, we're going to have to talk about, that have issues as far as being dead, safety, et cetera. So I'm going to run through these in order that I think makes sense, and is easiest to read to hardest.
So the legal notice, tree hearing, Southport Select Board, shall hold a tree hearing on Tuesday, May 31st, 2022, 6:30 PM to discuss removal of six trees located at five Stuttel Lane, six Sunrise Drive, across from 65 Marble Road, two stock well lane, trees ranging in size from 10-inch to 42-inch, consists of five oak trees and one maple tree. Each tree is posted. Any person wishing to be heard on a proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Objection to the proposed removals may be made and right prior to or at the hearing. Meeting may be reviewed by the public through a link located at www.southbrowetown.com backslash meetings. Any person wishing to be heard on proposed plans should appear at the time designated, Southbrow Select Board.
The way we're going to do this is we're going to hear from Mr. Lloyd first, then I'm going to ask the planning board if they've got a comment on the particular tree we're talking about. Then I'm going to turn it over to the Select Board, and I'm going to start with Ms. Brashia because she has been the person who has gone around to all the trees with the planning board and with Mr. Lloyd, for Select Board to make comments, and we will ask if there are any comments from the public as far as objectors, et cetera. And then we'll take the vote as far as what we think should be the disposition of that particular tree. So Mr. Lloyd, we're going to start with, I think, an easy one, which is six Sunrise Drive.
Okay. Six Sunrise Drive is a dead maple tree that was a resident request due to the fact that it was breaking apart. The tree ward and recommendation on that tree is to remove it and replant a new tree in the fall. Close to that location.
That's your recommendation?
Yes.
Any more?
Yes, according to the G I S, it's on time.
So he's saying yes, according to the G I S, it is on time. So I concur that it's dead. So I'm going to start with Ms. Brashia.
So this was not one of the trees, I had actually walked up a tree board, I had driven by it prior, as you can see on the screen behind you. It was pretty dead, and I didn't think there was going to be too much comment on this one. So I concur with Mr. Lloyd's assessment, as well as the arborist that looked at it as well.
Anyone else from Select Board have a question on this particular tree, so I'm saying no? Nope? All right, anyone else for the public have a comment on this tree, objection?
Just a process question?
Yes.
Okay, so I thought that at the Select Board level, these are appeals from a tree ward's determination about whether to take it down. Was there actually a written objection?
So Andrew, when we put the interim policy in place, this was one of the things the board agreed to do was to have all Chapter 87 hearings come before the board of Select.
Okay.
This is just following the process, the interim process.
Understood, thanks.
Okay, so can I have a motion to support Mr. Lloyd's recommendation to cut down this dead tree?
So move, second?
Six Sunrise Drive. Chelsea? All in favor? Okay, Mr. Lloyd, let's go to the tree at 65 Marble Road.
Okay, so that is the dead oak. That one's pretty straightforward, tree ward and recommendation is to remove it. No objection letters were received.
Are you agreeing?
Very good.
Lisa?
Absolutely dead as well.
Any other comment from Select Board as far as this dead tree? Anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this tree? So motion to support the recommendation of Mr. Lloyd to remove this dead tree at 65 Marble Road.
So move?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Five zero, so two down. Okay, next one, I'm going to skip, if anyone's looking, we're going to skip Stuttel, we'll come back to that. I'm going to do Stockwell and Highland next, this one's kind of easy. This one's not under our jurisdiction, it's actually not on town land, it's on a person's property, but it's also subject to open land. So the person who wants this tree to come down because of its perceived danger is going to have to deal with the owner of the apartment first, and the problem is some open space rules to get this removed. This is not one that's, we're going to consider, it's not under our jurisdiction. All right, the last one, as far as the section goes, we've got three trees on Stuttel Lane. There's two trees that had a double trunk, and there's a separate one.
So the double, the double stem oak on the corner, it's suffering from crown dieback at the top, so it's beginning its process of dying. And the fire chief also weighed in on it, and he recommended remove for access to the fire apparatus down Stuttel Lane, that that tree poses impact, especially during snow, when the road gets real narrow. So the tree ward's recommendation on that tree is to remove it. And I did receive an objection letter about that tree.
So we're going to deal with these separately because they actually are in different circumstances. All right, Mr. Trail?
The two together?
Yes.
I concur with you on this, but I would request that they not be taken down to the falls. So not taken down by the fall because of what?
And I concur as well, and Ms. Luttrell had shared that concern with Ms. Gallagher, and she did not foresee that as being an issue by the time it goes out and gets bidded and gets taken down at won't be till the fall or next September. So we all did concur on this tree, as well as the arborist.
So Select Board?
A question first, so the tree was titled, is that the one like a BPX of them?
Yes, it's at the corner.
Right on the area, yeah.
Any questions?
I have a question, I saw a fire chief's memo saying that he actually could get the tower cut in there. It was a tight fit, it actually could be. But he did say that he recommended so.
No margin.
When we do get a lot of snow, there's no place for that snow to go, especially on that road because there are so many large trees, that it gets really narrow.
I guess I'm generally inclined to save every tree we can save until we really have to cut it down. So this is totally dead, around a general view, I'd try to save it, I guess. Given what I've heard here, I don't object to taking it down, but.
Okay, so now let's turn to any objectors as far as having this double tree removed in the fall.
I don't object, Deputy January 58th flag rider, I'm speaking as an individual, not as a planning board member. I don't object to the arborist opinion, but I would ask that we put in a replacement. As Tree City recommends, that we use two trees, replace a large tree with two new trees for every tree that's taken down. This one looks technically live, although it's dying poorly, and so I would ask that we, owner, I guess, to plant two trees for each tree that's taken down.
So that I think it'd be worth it in the right of way, it would be the town, and I would be absolutely supportive of that request.
Okay.
And I can't imagine they would have an issue with that either.
Who decides what kind of tree?
I would assume the DPW, but I'm sure they would be open to feedback.
Would that create an access hazard for the fire department? Is there space to put replacement trees in?
When replacement trees are planted, they're planted looking towards the future, not. Not our roads meeting the tree, but where the roads currently are, the trees are done set back. So there's enough town roadway there to move the trees back a little bit, not have to go on private property. It's great.
Mr. Barrington, I think you objected to these trees.
Yes, I did. Sure. Grandparent in fifty, Flag Road. Yeah, I, I think that. Personally, I think that we should, well, I think that we should wait for the tree to actually die before removing it. You know, I visited this particular tree and I saw that there were plenty of green branches, you know, filled with leaves on it. And there were a few dead branches on the top, but I don't see it as a particular imminent hazard right now. And also there's, you know, that's Mr. Flag said, there's a, you know, a letter from the fire chief saying that he currently does not have an access issue cutting down the road. So I just don't think that is, you know, more than believable. You know, also the giant tree, it's thirty, you know, thirty inch diameter. And, you know, I think over the last, I don't know, maybe three to five years, there's been a number of large trees picked out on town, especially not following proper processes. And, you know, I think we should try to save as many trees as possible. Wait and see if it actually dies before going forward. And also, we did have a number of arborist reports done in, I think it was May twenty twenty-one and November twenty twenty-one, on a number of roads throughout town that identified a backlog of about eighty to eighty-five trees, I believe, that were classified as dead by the arborists. So I just don't see how this is a priority, you know, my urge towards you saving it for now and if it dies in the future, then that's.
Can I add a comment to that? So the reason it became a priority was there was a request from a homeowner. You will start to see the backlog of trees from the prior list we're working towards. Starting to put steps in place for hearings on those that are required. So between now and Fall Town Meeting, the goal is to figure out what the cost is to remove those trees that are on the list. You know, and bring it back to the board and bring it to town meeting for approval to get those removed. But this, this was moved up because it was a specific request. And also Kathy, I would ask, we referenced the fire chief's letter a couple of times. It's short. If you don't mind, I'd like to read it in the record, just. Karen, I just, and again, this is from Chief Achilles. Karen, I assessed the location today with Tower twenty-one. The vehicle was able to make the corner with little to no room for error. At this time, I say no immediate hazard, but any reduction in road width due to snow or ice could impair access. Therefore, I recommend a removal of the trees described and also the trimming of overhanging branches in the area of the corner available to discuss further as needed.
So two hands in the audience, Mr. and Ms. Canal, I'm not sure.
Hello, can you hear me, folks?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yeah, so I'm the homeowner and I have to share my concern with Chief Achilles that when, when we do get considerable snow, it is actually, it does actually create a bottleneck. So for a large vehicle like a fire truck to get by would, it could, it could keep the fire truck from getting around that corner. And that's what I've seen over the last twenty years that I've lived here. So while the previous person that opposed it said that it doesn't, it doesn't present a current problem, it does present a problem during the winter time. And I do agree with Chief Achilles' assessment on that.
And just to be clear, these trees are in your yard?
They are at the, they are at the edge of my property. That is correct.
Yes, Ms. Burns Fiore, I'm bringing you over as well.
I see the moon. Yeah, Mike has offered the removal of these trees. I don't know how to fix that.
Patty, we can't hear you clearly. We know you're talking, we just can't hear what you're saying. So Patty?
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay, I'm not sure what I need to get closer to here. I'm going to be quick. I see in the package, there's a letter from Mike who is offered to pay for this at no expense to the town through his company with a fully licensed tree company. What, what is the determination of the tree? If it's going to be cut down, can we have him cut it down at no expense to the town?
So. She's, she's saying that there's a letter in the package from Mr. Matura that offered to incur the cost of removing these trees. Patty, my understanding is, and Mr. Purple, you can correct me if I'm wrong here. My understanding is that that was when he had a tree company out there that was doing some work on his own residence. And unfortunately, that time has passed. So the, the burden would fall back onto the DPW as a right-of-way tree.
Have you checked with him on that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
We will check, and you later stated April twenty-four, so it wasn't that long ago.
No, we can certainly check.
It wasn't, and it, it didn't seem to imply that there was a time limit there.
That was what I understood it to be, but we can certainly check, absolutely.
Lisa, you think there's a time limit?
I thought there was.
I'm just reading, I'm just doing a literal read of the letter. It does not appear that there's a time limit.
There's no downside in asking.
No, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to support the renovation?
I think we have, we have Mr. Canal.
Yes, Mr. Canal, here. Yes, I just wanted to follow up with the, with the statement about Mr. Matura. There was, he did have a tree company at, at, at that time that had all their equipment out there, which is what poses the, one of the biggest costs to bring all that equipment out. And he had had that work done that, at that time. But since that time has come and gone, that's why the, he rescinded the offer.
So you think he has rescinded the offer?
Yes.
We'll ask anybody just to be sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Canal, your hand's still up. I'm asking you to unmute it. Okay, can I have a motion to support the renovation, Mr. Lloyd, to have the two trees taken down that are the thirty-inch trees on Stuttel?
Taken down in the fall.
By two mutually agreeable trees.
So move.
Second. All in favor? Five zero?
Yeah.
Again, alright. Okay, now let's go to the third tree on Stuttel, which is a little bit different situation. So it's not on the center.
No, it's to the left of the driveway, the oak tree. It's still healthy and viable. So the recommendation is that we, when we have a tree crew out, we trim, there's some dead in the tree above the homeowner's home on that side of the tree, that we clean the tree up. And the recommendation is not to remove it. That's the sign. And I did receive an objection letter about this tree as well.
I concur with everything that's been said, Kathy. That was the discussion we had.
Anybody else on the select board have a comment on this tree?
No, I mean, I looked at it, it's more off of the road. It doesn't have as much of a concern as the road.
Thought we said a different story.
And it's healthy according to the arborists, so overall.
Alright, any objection to keeping this tree and not cutting this one down?
I just have a question, not an objection. Is there any way to, you know, I've seen a lot of trees around town, which when they're trimmed down, they really severely impact the, I guess, the shapes of the trees of, you know, around power wires, preventing cutting out large swaths of the trees. So is there any way to make sure that the general characteristic of the tree is maintained?
Well, Mr. Lloyd's hearing what you say. Ms. Elegant's here, she's hearing what you say.
That's the utility company. When they trim around the power lines, they do what they call flat cutting. They're not too concerned about the condition of the tree when they're done. They're more concerned about the lines themselves. The way the DPW trims trees is we trim each tree as its own, not just going down the line and trimming it, so. Yes, so we don't allow a flat cutting done when utility companies come in. So any of this cutting, trimming would be done and controlled by DPW and tree ward.
Any objection? So can you tell us, Mr. Lloyd?
If it's, if it's replacing a tree that died from, will be not natural causes like aging out, then we would look into the soil before we would plant a tree in the same spot. Yes.
There's no more objection. So is there a motion to retain this tree? Let it live?
So move.
Okay, so we finished the first part of our tree hearings. Now we're going to go to the next part of our tree hearing.
Sorry about that.
This is still going to be a hearing, it's not cutting a field. Alright, so we're going to close the first part of our tree hearings tonight, with the six trees that were on that. And we're going to, now the, open a new tree hearing, but we're going to consider the disposition of two trees that are at the corner of Flag Road and Deerfoot. Why are you waiting?
I was going to sit back here. My, I've already given mine.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so all in favor of closing the first hearing?
I move to close first here.
Second. All in favor? Five zero. Now we're going to reopen, or open the second hearing, but we're going to talk about the two trees at Flag and Deerfoot. This is a hearing, this is not an appeal. We will, Mr. Lloyd has expressed his opinion at the joint hearing with the planning board. So I'd like you to still express your opinion before you leave.
May I ask a process question, Kathy? I'm sorry. So Mark, was this hearing covered under the prior hearing notice? Did I miss that? The hearing notice that you read, I thought it was specific to the trees.
That was specific to the trees.
Is this, is this tree hearing? What are the requirements of this hearing? Is it just a posting or? I just want to make sure we've met the requirements. Notification, okay, thank you.
I don't think there was a formal bar.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we've covered our bases. Thank you. Sorry, Kathy, go ahead.
Alright, Mr. Lloyd, can you let us know about your opinion on these two trees?
So the original hearing with the planning board was going off the original plan that was given for the reconfiguration of that intersection. And it was my opinion that those two trees wouldn't survive the construction and reorienting of that intersection of that plan on that day.
Okay, so it's not your opinion that this project could not go forward if those two trees were left? It's your opinion that the project would destroy the health of the two trees eventually?
The original plan, yes.
Okay, and now we've got a revised plan. Okay, they will allow these two trees to remain intact?
Which I haven't seen in the plan.
So first of all? Okay. Ms. Latrell? Would you like to explain what the planning board did at their?
So the planning board questioned the necessity of this intersection because it was based on our central and it hasn't been heard since twenty eighteen. So we just questioned whether this intersection, A, needs to be reworked and B, according to master and law, relocations of streets, the plans need to come before the planning board. We didn't see this until the campaign retreat.
Because it's the same.
Relocating roads requires.
So the planning board's opposition is to the entire project, not necessarily just the two trees?
Not, not opposition, we leave it, should be discussed whether it's still in the census.
We'd like to see that happen first for the trees come down or not come down.
Just a point of order, too. I think it's important to recognize that a scenic road.
So can you?
I think it's important to also note that, whether it's a scenic road or any road that requires a restructuring, regardless, we need to planning board review. That never happened. The only reason we saw this was because our planning board, town planner, actually saw the scenic road that was listed on the report. So I think number one, we were, we weren't completely bypassed. Number two, when we evaluated the health of the trees, it's what leads it to a removal of this network.
So all noted, we're not going to talk about the project as a whole, because I was trying to determine the trees as far as your opinion of these trees.
Can we ask Ms. Elegant a question?
Absolutely.
Karen, can you explain what the trigger for, yeah, sorry. Just so we understand what the trigger would be for the planning board review and report.
So when we talked to town council about this before, as far as intersections go, we were told within the right-of-way moving around the pavement, and I believe Mr. Purple can confirm this, is that's not, that's not something that's the planning board, because we're not changing the right-of-way, we're just moving around where people travel on it. So we did not think we needed to go for, this needed to go in front of them, in front of the planning board for that. This project itself, which I know we are going to talk about a little bit later, but it makes sense to bring it up a little bit in the appeal.
No, we're going to talk about it now.
Oh, okay. Is that, um, this project was not, was not because of the forty B. This project was brought forward because residents were concerned with the safety of Flag Road as it is and it stands today. And during discussions about the forty B said, it's already unsafe, people are already speeding, there's already problems, we can't add more traffic. So we had the safety study done. The safety study was based on what was going on at that time. So the striping, the stripes on the road, the, the driver feedback signs and that intersection. And when we had the court case and I had to go to court, they asked, what are you doing? Are you doing these things in the safety study? And this was something that we said, yes, this is coming forward. It's something that the town had allocated chapter ninety-one, two already with the anticipation of doing. So it's, it was a safety issue. It's intended, intended to slow traffic, making them have to take a right turn onto Flag, like a ninety-degree turn or a ninety-degree left. Take a ninety-degree off of Flag, right or left. It slows traffic down on Deerfoot because it's at the curb. It's, it doesn't just let you veer off. It's not, it's not a, it's not a fork in the road anymore. We've done this on other roads in town. When there were forks, we tried to make it a ninety-degree, we've done it right down there. it's not a fork in the road anymore, we've done this on other roads in town, when there were forks, we tried to make it a 90-degree, we've done it right down there. Um, and also made the crossing safer so that, um, it's clear where the crossing is for the children trying to get to the Trotter School. But that's why this project was underway, and that's why, because of the fact that we were moving it in the same right of way, is why we didn't need to go, or on my understanding, we don't need to go to planning board. And it's, as they just pointed out, it's been something that's been out there since 2015, this project.
So there's a lot of interrelated issues, um, with this project, truck exclusion, et cetera, so we're not going to, there's nothing that's gonna be decided as far as going forward with the project, I understand you've got a contract, I understand you need an answer at some point soon. But all we're gonna do tonight is vote on whether we support taking down the two trees or not, that's all we're gonna try to do tonight. This other information is very helpful and will be dealt with shortly.
Can we verify, Kathy, with, with, um, or Mr. Purple, were you privy to the conversation with council? I, that, that's.
There's been a lot of conversations with council about trees, so it, it, what Ms. Galigan's saying does sound correct, but I would like to.
Just, yeah, again, and I'm not doubting the conversation's place, I just think, you know, I'd like to know what the trigger is as well. You know, uh, just to verify that, and as well with the new set of plans, if we could make sure that, um, those also get forwarded to the planning board.
And can you explain what we need by, we need by new set of plans and right in your stance, what that's referring to?
So, Karen, do you want to address the new?
Sure, so, without taking down the trees, um, we can still, we just need that intersection, the, the larger tree, the, um, the huckleberry? Hickory, thank you. Um, was, is in the way, uh, it's on, it's, it's where the sidewalk would go to get children from the crossing to the Trotter Air walkway. Um, that tree, it, it can't come down because the planning board already voted on to have it come down, but we just need, we can still get a safe, accessible crossing, land people, because that's the requirement, and then people would walk the way they do now, which is along the roadway.
Okay, so a new plan works around that tree?
Yes, and also the, um, the maple tree that's in the current, currently in an island, but will be attached.
Okay, select board, um, any other questions or comments on this?
Got a couple of questions, if I may. Uh, one, backtracking, second, the town council's opinion is that from current town council or previous town council?
Current.
Correct, but, uh, second, uh, if we proceed with the, the new proposal that you have, and I, I'm sorry, I just got that this afternoon, so I don't have the chance to look at it.
I did.
Detail, but, uh, do we risk the same issue that Mr. Leroy had mentioned previously where the construction process would create a significant hazard for those trees' survival? Do we have enough room to give the, the trees room to thrive here?
Well, where, where the trees are, they aren't in a very good spot for thriving as is. Um, but the larger tree, the hickory, is, was right in the path of the sidewalk. So that's why that would have come down, if we don't build the sidewalk, it's still just on the edge of the road, and you can see the road actually kind of curves around it a little bit. Um, it's not ideal spot for a tree.
Risk.
But, but it, it, it's in the same risk it was before, and the same with the maple, we're just moving the sidewalk further behind it so that we affect it less.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, uh, town council is gonna get back to us to verify whether or not the revised plan needs planning board, right?
Good point. Thank you.
Reports. Okay, thank you. Also, so when, I'm looking at the 2006, sorry, 2016 Flag Road safety study, and then that there's a schematic of the plant, the project that, so it's five years ago, seven years ago. And, so, it's got some dots showing in there, are those proposed placement of new trees with the reconfigured intersection, or are there any new trees planted after? Other ones are removed?
Um, I can't, I think they did show new trees on there, and like I said, it was a schematic, and we don't have new trees on the plan, but we do have a backlog of trees that actually planning has secured for us through other projects that we do need to plant, and that's, that area would be a good spot for some, um, even that, that island itself, because we do need to, um, we, we need to find open spaces for some of these that aren't right on roadway. Um, so, that, that's just a good location. But, that, that is still just a schematic, so it doesn't look exactly, it wasn't done through, with, um, like, design standards.
Yeah. Okay, and then Kathy, are you going, or you're asking for questions that are related to the appeal of the tree wardens?
This is actually the hearing for it, we're listening to Ms. Roy's opinion, we've got this, we're actually doing, this is the actual hearing.
So can you, could you also speak to what feedback you then you got from the most immediate abutters from this project?
Um, actually.
The packet has letters that were sent to the people who are in the immediate vicinity of this.
Correct, um, so I, I, I did only receive some, um, end up meeting one person out there, they're here tonight. Um.
Mr. Coombs?
Yep. And, um, the thing, i- i- at the time, I mean, I do think people want to see the traffic slow down on Flag Road. I think this does it, I think there's other issues that, um, you know, residents, a lot of residents want sidewalks, a lot of residents want the streets to be safer for bicycle and sidewalk, but, um, the first thing we need to deal with is speed, and this, this does that, it might only affect the cars until they get to Orchard Road, and then at that point, they, they're back up to speed, but it will slow them down at the intersection. And that, you know, we do have a vulnerable group trying to get across the road there going to Trotter.
The reconnoisseur's clearly, um, uh, thoughts on both sides of the project itself, um, which we'll get to at a later date, so that, that's a fact, we, we know that already. And so let's just continue to talk about the two trees, so we can get through that. Mr. Coombs, you're right, welcome to speak to, um, we'll, we'll get to, to letting people talk, but let's at least stick with the trees first.
Okay, I think. I mean, I'm interested in what Mr. Coombs has to say.
Before you make a decision on the trees?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so, Mr. Coombs, would you like to, to speak, given you are the persons who is?
So first, my name's David, 61 Deerfoot Road, just reminiscing here, where I'm sitting here. Remember my time with David and Bill sitting in, getting that much space, and it's so refreshing to see three women, thank God, at that point, the same.
Yes.
So, such a great change. Um, I go back to, um, pre-COVID. I always think about the scale over there, and speaking to, um, not all the same select board, but some of you. And we're talking about the safety issue with the equipment flag, and they know I'm a front row observer, going with the voices across the street, you know, kids walking, from here, and in majority of people walking, basically, on the street, and the speed and the traffic is certainly concerned. And Karen, to her credit, took the ball, ran with it, and developed this plan to try to run through the intersection. Now, I have a picture on my phone, I took Sunday of the tractor trail that went by, and I held it past the hip, and hip, and turn sign, passed no tractor trail, right to stand turn sign, and went a little bit past the intersection, so we had to back up almost to my driveway to make the turn. And the reality is, this plan will not solve the problem, it solves part of the problem. But the reality is, it's a police issue, it's an education issue for people, now maybe the neighbors go slower. I think kids, people going, commuting back from Rhode Island from Alborough, don't go slow, they just want to get the hell home, come out, to Land Road Island, and the problem is, it doesn't solve the issue of people speeding down here, but maybe they slow down 50 yards before this stop sign, or maybe they don't, but you know what? For people to take a right down Flag, they're gonna go to the first or the second, hold some flag before they hit the accelerator, because it's just last time, making the check. To me, it's a huge problem, Karen's done a great job working with me and Amy, she's done a great job going, you know, picking ball, like I said. She's looked at everything she can do, we're not solving the problem, and we're putting a lot of money and time and effort into something that I don't think is gonna deal with it, I mean, if it's, if I thought it solved 100% of the problem, 90% or 80%, 75%, I'd say take a flyer, let's do it. I don't think it's, even approaches 50%, so why the hell spend the money when the town doesn't have money? Why put a tax burden on people, when 10 years now may not be you, it probably won't be me, have, have, will, or will be, but, but maybe not. But the reality is, someone else is gonna have to deal with this problem. So I don't think you should kick the can, I don't think you should, you know, take the trees down, and I think we should all collectively look at this in terms of the town concept, and the town context, to look at, you know, their parkability, look at Pine Hill, everybody's got a problem, Deerfoot's one problem. But we need to collectively figure out how we're gonna address it on a multi-pronged approach, and I think until we do that, there is no reason to spend money or take trees down until we know we're gonna solve the problem the right way.
Kathy, can I add one thing as well? So, because this is based on an objection, the planning board has already denied the trees coming down, it doesn't matter if we say, yes, the trees are coming down, that's the point of the consolidated and joint hearing. So, realistically, it's not before us tonight to decide whether these trees are gonna come down or not, because it's not gonna happen.
So we're gonna vote, the trees to come down, then you've got a split decision, that's gonna have to somehow be appealed, hardly to court. Um, and you've got, you know, two different boards saying different things, so it makes it rather complicated.
It does.
But do we know that we are the, uh, the appeal route for the planning board? I didn't think that.
We're not, we're not.
That's for it. So, that's why I keep saying, this, we've talked to town council today, um, several times. And this is actually our hearing, uh, so, Ms. Leroy has expressed his opinion, but this is actually the hearing of the appeal. The appeal will take place elsewhere, and if we were to disagree with the planning board, um, and then, you know, someone wants to appeal either one, and then it, the rest were settled, no, we're not the appeal of the planning board.
It was an independent hearing.
We actually said it goes to court. Let's back. Anything else you do?
Okay, just, I thought you had the, you would not go to court unless the select board were to yield this, right?
Well, if we agree with the planning board, the trees have to come down, right, if you voted for that, then someone could disagree with that and appeal it to court. If we disagree with the planning board, then you could have someone that disagrees with the planning board, take it to court, but, and, and then somebody could disagree with us and take it to court. So it's rather confusing when the two disagree as far as what then happens next.
But I think, based on the new plans that were submitted today, correct, the trees aren't really an issue at this point, so.
It's a moot point.
It's a moot point for.
In other words, the trees can stay, and if the project goes forward, the trees can still stay.
That's a whole nother.
The whole is the trees were gonna come down, it's because of the project, now there's a new project that works around the trees, so it does make it a probably moot point at this point, as far as taking down the trees, the trees are healthy, there, there's no dispute with that. Um, maybe they're in a bad place, but they, she said, they've, they've always been a bad place, so I'm not gonna change that.
But you still have the procedural issue of the hearing before you, where you need to make some, make some. But the planning board apparently disagrees.
Well, I'm not sure why, but, say, so, your three.
So, yeah, Mimi, can you come up here and would you mind just sort of, make sure, fix, fix that border?
I think we're giving this what they want here, but.
So, you keep calling this a hearing, but it hasn't been properly noticed, so I don't know how it could be a hearing. We have checked with legal counsel as far as what we're doing at this moment, and he said that we are on solid ground, um, with this, with the notice that was given. Because it says in the agenda an appeal, it doesn't say hearing. Well, so though, that, that question, and on scenic roads, the planning board has jurisdiction. And according to our town council, unless he changed his mind, you, I, you can't appeal, the select board cannot appeal the decision of a elected board, and that's not what we're doing. And, well, you're talking.
No, I think she was saying, Mimi, if, if someone chose to appeal the planning board's side of the joint hearing, we'd have to go to Land Court. We're not appealing, but if there was a citizen that.
Well, she said if the select board and the planning board didn't agree. It's not clear what happens.
Third parties could appeal. The court.
So, maybe, I'm just telling you what legal counsel said a little 30 minutes ago, um, because we pointed out, this says appeal from here and not hearing, and he said that he believed we were on solid ground going forward with the hearing, even though it's been given. So that's all I can say, um, because he's town council. Unless anybody else has anything they want to add.
So the question.
So we're still gonna vote, it's still their legal hearing requirement, so I don't understand this.
So the question is whether to affirm or deny his finding? Okay, alright.
To, to, to basically support or not support this recommendation. And Ms. Latrell's saying, well, um, if this is a hearing, it has not been properly noticed. And town council disagrees with that. So you are voting to affirm or not? Or not, or not the decision of the tree warden, not the planning board?
Correct, the planning board's decision is your own.
And it's.
That was unclear.
So at worst, the select board could disagree, but that doesn't change the disposition of the trees. It closes the process.
So I would suggest the select board go ahead and vote, right? Because we're not gonna solve, we're not going to solve the issue we have brought tonight, because they've got town council telling us. One thing, um, I agree that, your question's about, go ahead, Ms. Marie.
Can you come up as well, I'm sorry, just to the, I'll get started.
Yeah, David, you're at 58 Flag Road, we're also not following the process that the select board agreed, which is the interim process. So, based on that, the interim, um, tree process on consolidated, uh, consolidated tree hearings, scenic roads or non-scenic roads, if you follow that decision tree, um, the, um, trees that are on a scenic roads, follow that down, it enters the planning board, there's no further agreement or disagreement by the select board. It's the non-scenic roads that takes a, a different path, but we're talking about scenic road and planning board has the jurisdiction, an appeal goes to court, it doesn't go to the source.
So I think, no one said that, the, the point is, is on the objection, there were objections to the trees coming down, and under chapter 87, the board of selectmen has to hear the objection. And I think there's still a little bit of confusion, which is why we're trying to work out a process, I know, like I'd said, that, um, Mr. Leroy and Ms. Galigan, Ms. Latrell and I are, are gonna try to sit down tomorrow, at least create a framework that Mimi can bring back to the planning board, and I can bring back to the board of selectmen, so some of these questions don't arise again, it's crystal clear.
Yeah, can, can I also make a, another comment before the discussion closes, uh, about the Flag Road report? Um, so it was my letter that prompted Mr. Rooney and other select board members to, um, convene a Flag Road Safety Forum, and my letter and my husband's letter, and we heard from all kinds of neighbors and meetings, and others, um, came out. Um, and that was in 2015 or 16 or something like that. Um, the, the report lists a number of, of options, I guess, for improving the situation on Flag Road. Um, I don't really remember anyone complaining about this intersection, as Mr. Coombs says, people aren't zipping down the road and, like, you know, tearing down the intersection, it's, there's a problem on Flag Road, and Karen has tried over the years to assist with the, um, putting up the, uh, the signs, or you could give a feedback signs, and that's the thing, but there's like 10 other things that are mentioned in that report that haven't been tried. One of them is right out front, one of those berms or speed humps or speed bumps, all kinds of things that could be tried on that road. I mean, changing an intersection is not going to help the situation on the road. Um, and I will just add that it's a scenic intersection, I don't, uh, you know, just on map from 1831, it's probably an old cow path, it looks like maybe it was, um, and so, uh, I, I don't see how, or why the town would want to do anything with that intersection, I think what came up at the hearing as well. I think what came up at the hearing as well is that there's no safety reports. From, you know, I think there was a wayward truck that tried to go down the path to Traviar. And then there was the Jack Knight truck. But that's a possibly truck issue, as been mentioned. So, you know, I am in favor of taking a look at that report. It's very dated now, but there's probably some some suggestions. Deerfoot takes a turn. I see no reason why I can't put a stop sign there. I think we should try some like minor measures before we take drastic measures. I think a stop sign is probably pretty cheap compared to changing the intersection. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so based on what we've heard, based on the confusion as to whether we can properly notice this hearing. Based on the fact that we know planning board decision, the trees aren't coming down. There's no danger of that. I would propose that we table this as far as our discussion until we get perfect clarity. And understand exactly what our role is in these two trees.
And then even the broader discussion of the.
Yeah. Well, we know we're going to that fight. So anyone disagree with that?
So this is really a, the hearing will then be continued.
Yes, so I propose, yes, thank you, that we continue this hearing until we get perfect clarity. As far as our role in dealing with these two trees, a role or not role.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Wheatley, I'm going to. Ask you to unmute.
Hi, this is Erin Wheatley from 22 Clifford Street. Pretty confused at this point. Anything that's going on here with regards to the trees and the intersection and the town? And the decision process of what goes to planning board, what doesn't? And I I just wanted to state something that sounded really bizarre to me, that Karen said that if you're just moving pavement, you don't need to get approval from the planning board. And I'd like to add that in to understanding. Pretty much every change is moving pavement. So is that a way of not having to go to the planning board that I haven't heard of before? And the the designs that I've seen for the changes in the intersection were pretty significant, not just moving pavement. And so I was a little concerned about that as a resident to really understand, is that a real thing? And do we need to? Do we need to add something to the rules of our town that moving pavement also needs to go to the planning board?
That's a lot in one series of questions. So we decided that we are going to get clarity as far as the jurisdiction of the planning board over this project. That's number one. Number two, we have decided to continue the hearing on disposition of the two trees.
Okay.
So we can get further clarity. So it's not as confusing as appears. We've made it tonight, so we're sorry about that.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, my main thing, you you know, I've been following this and obviously can, you know, have similar feelings with the people that have spoke around. The issue isn't the intersection, it's really speeding. And how do we, you know, affect that in our town? But I also do think sometimes other issues come up when when people are talking that reveal a lack in maybe oversight that we need to extend a little bit stronger around changing things in our town without the residents and the and the boards that we have in place having oversight of that.
So thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, there's a motion to continue.
I think there was somebody else that said. Mr. Bennington.
I just want to say I agree with some of the other people that have questioned your authority to even be dealing with this matter. But I suppose that now that it's before you, I would just urge that we actually just deny, go ahead and deny. We request to. Cut down the trees and rather, you know, rather than continue without a review to a group anymore than keep the trees.
Thank you for your point. Okay, so we've got a motion to continue the hearing. Is your second?
Second.
Okay, I'll favor.
Ms. Trell, do you need to, oh, sorry, I thought you left. I just want to make sure if you do, Mimi is able to adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Ms. Galligan, let's talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Leroy, for coming.
So Karen, can you come back to the? Before we start talking about specific proposed changes. As everyone may remember from the recent town meeting, there was an article approved that is called Rules and Regulations that would apply to what we're going to do tonight, except for the fact that it's not effective yet. However, based on discussions with Mr. Purple and Mr. Dinkin, who was the primary sponsor of that article, we believe that in the least of all the spirit as far as this goes, that it was posed by select force. And we therefore should practice what we preach. So what we're going to do tonight is discuss the postchanges. We're going to vote, we're going to vote on the 14th as part of the consent agenda. Yeah. Got it? Anyone have an issue with the plan? All right, so Ms. Galligan, tell us what you want to change.
Right, somehow I only ended up with the track changes version in front of me. And I thought I put a memo together, but I don't know if I can attack it or not. Basically, we have no real changes of significance. There's a new waistband for the mattresses and box springs. So we had to change that. We are changing the mechanism where you, how you get stickers. We're going, the permits are now going to be through. The same, the same process that you get building permits and our other permits in town. So it's just a different website to go to. So it's not City Hall Systems anymore. And then the last piece of it, I did send you the, I don't have it. What the random, the costs are so that you could make the decision. Because as you know, this is not enterprise fund, so we don't make a recommendation on what the cost should be. That's really up to the select board. Because it's a, it's just a cost of those, a general fund. It does not fund the DPW in any way, shape or form, any different than any other general fund or tax does. We did change one other thing. We put, we put the dates for when you can get a. A prorated sticker, because I didn't have dates on it before, so we did that.
So when you move yourself, if you're not here for the whole year, there is a date that you're not here for.
Correct.
So that's it?
Yeah, this, we really, there was no substantial change.
Questions?
Just a couple of quick ones, Carol, Karen said about that. The, yeah. I would assume that the link you're going to have posted on the DPW's page for stickers with the new process.
Yes.
Okay. And can you tell me, is it the state mandate on the mattress? Why or how did that come about?
Um, yeah, it's a state, it's a waistband by DEP. Part of trying to get to a zero waste by.
There's no way for homeowners to bring any mattress or box spring, just to be clear, to the transfer station in any way at this time.
Correct, at this time. We're looking into what can be done if, same when we had to stop CRTs. Right, it was sort of became a, do we do one big collection? Can we collect them at hazardous waste day? Can I do it once every six months? People to store them. We we had, if anyone remembers, we did have a, like an Eagle Leasing type box up. And people were putting them in and it. It just really was disgusting.
People were taking them out too.
They were promised, so it's it's not ideal.
That's a massive box springs, yeah. They used to be a container that people would.
Yeah, so, yeah, it was, it, yeah. So having them be, having them like at a hazardous waste day, I think.
So you're trying to find a solution for.
And I'll list for people if they can't, if when they buy a new mattress, the old mattress doesn't go. Which generally you can, you can, depending where you buy them, but a lot of times they'll take the other one out.
That's it, thank you.
I had a question on the, and this isn't necessarily in the guidelines. But one part is, so I was, I took over reviewing all of the free stickers last year and got some feedback from residents that they would prefer it be a staff employee that does it. So I've spoken to Melanie and the selectman's office to take that over. But one comment that had come up last year was, you know, husband and wife both would like a free sticker. They're in the same household, so I think we just need to update if the board's okay with free sticker for the household and not necessarily one sticker per household. So there was a lot of resident feedback on on that piece of it.
It'd be limited to two per household or more?
I mean, I think two would alleviate most of the concerns that I've heard from. I just, you know, we charged per household, so people are like, well, I paid for one and I can get a second one without paying for an additional one. So that was just some feedback. And I would recommend that we have it go to the selectman office email account versus myself. Which is on the application.
Yeah, we did change it on the application. I I did, I thought that was all in the packet, but I didn't look at the whole packet. So that's already printed it. Yeah, so everything, that's already been changed, all the mail-in stuff, everything's sort of redone because we didn't have anything significant. In our, if you guys want to change the process at all or change anything, you know, that we need to.
I just, I think the only thing in these rules and regs are the limiting it to one sticker. And maybe we just, maybe we just increase it to two.
To need two stickers for need?
Yep. Yeah.
I I agree with that just only because I know in my house, my husband has the sticker. And then now he's traveling, so I had to get a sticker. So you don't know.
Right.
Situation, so that makes sense to me.
Okay, so the process is going to be that we're going to notice this hearing in the next day or so. So we'll have seven days to that. And then when you meet on 14th, it will be on consent agenda to to vote on unless someone pulls it from. Have sense, Sam?
Another comment question. Historically, the public works planning board has reviewed these and declined. Is that not going to happen this year?
So it didn't happen because I realized it was the end of May and we really needed to get these out. So we've just been backlogged with too many other projects.
Not for these are significant changes, but that.
Right, no, and it's the same thing that they didn't need for the budget this year either. It's just this year's been crazy.
So Mr. Siders, are you offering to to try to get the group together to look at these before the 14th?
I would be more than happy, but I've tried that before and it hasn't worked. I don't want to push this ring. The other comment I had typo driven, fines and violations. It was rather a reference to the Board of Selecting and the town code. It's not.
Select board.
That was actually throughout the document. Yeah.
Find that.
Could it be somebody, could it be somebody who updated the town code?
All right, so everybody happy with this one?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mimi, do you need to adjourn your meeting? Is Marty coming back?
We're in five minutes.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure that you're set and you're covered.
Okay, so on to reports, so chair's report. So the only thing I want to do is try to get the schedule set for resume selectmen's hours. But before we do it, I've got some questions, but I've never been to one of you guys yet. When you've done it with Pat, do you have many takers?
It varies, it depends. Yeah, it depends. I mean, there's been times we've had six people and then there's been times.
No people.
No people or one person. But I I think it's, there's a value, I still believe.
Oh, I agree, but so what can we do to, what what have you done to make sure people know that?
So reached out through various avenues, obviously through Facebook, using the Facebook groups. It's been shared all over that. It's been, the blog has done something on it as well. Certainly open to to other avenues, maybe.
The banner.
The banner, thank you. Yeah, it just, it depends. It depends on the timeframe, Kathy, of of what's going on summer. We didn't ever really have any takers during the summer. Summer was tough. So, but at other times, you know, prior, I think, Sam, to town meetings. We've had people that just want to come and and talk. So it just varies. It 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 depends on what, you know, issues may be on the table.
Six o'clock is the the time that shows.
Usually, yeah.
Gives people time to get home from work. And, you know, we've always figured even if one person came, then we've accomplished what we set up to do. You know, the people know that we're accessible and they have the opportunity.
Sam has a lot of takers at the transfer station.
Even if nobody.
And I'm not in the position, she actually does. You know, I think it may be some of the same.
Because they're there already, though.
Yeah, but I agree, they're there, that's the point, they're there.
Even if nobody comes, I think it's an important thing too. Because I think you got to offer and then you've made the offer and people.
So it sounds like it was consensus to to restart it. And do we want to be started? Given what you said about summer, do we want to start summer or?
I would think probably maybe the end of August, Kathy, early September, at the earliest.
Would you guys say what you said, that wait till end of August?
Beginning of September to restart.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't see any means of schedule tonight, then we're going to wait till August. We know we're going to do it, we'll put that back on the agenda when it gets closer, so we can get a schedule. And two people did it at a time?
Yeah.
All right, sounds like a plan. So that's my report. Okay, other members' reports. So I'm just going to go start with Andrew.
I don't have anything on the other reports.
Mr. Siders?
Nothing there, thanks.
All right, so Eagle, Chelsea, I assumed you were going to speak to Mimi?
Yes.
Okay, okay, three of us were there. Eagle Scout Ceremony, I just wanted to share with the board, I had the pleasure of attending Troop One's Eagle Court on the 22nd from two to three. There were four pretty impressive young men that had done some great things. I'd like to take a second and just acknowledge each of them for what they've done. Robert Stewart removed approximately 1,800 square feet of invasive Japanese knotweed and bitter sweet pine, which is not an easy thing to do. And then created a 280-foot gravel trail from the street to a six-by-six viewing platform. He created that for salt, which is a tremendous, a tremendous, tremendous amount of work and a job. Michael Hurley created a meditative space at St. Matthew's Parish consisting of benches. He created a bird feeder, a statue and plantings. Unlike other areas of the church, this one was created in a very accessible location so that there would be space for elderly and disabled parishioners so they could navigate. So that was wonderful as well. Chase Whitney renovated a room at the Pilgrim Congregational Church, which had fallen into disrepair and was being used for storage. This renovation included fixing walls, painting, constructing a meeting table, whiteboard wall and a shelf to hold prayer candles. The best part is, is the space is now used for education as a meeting space by the church and non-church organizations. So it created another meeting space, which again is a wonderful thing. Last is Wolfersell. His project was to improve the Shrine of Mary outside St. Matthew's Parish. A long peystone path with cobblestone edges was created to connect the road in the fair area in order to make the site easier to access. Also, the shrine area was refurbished and new planters with plantings were installed on the site. So kudos to these four young men. It was pretty inspirational to hear all of the amazing things. I'd also like to commend the leaders. Some of these leaders don't even have kids and scouts anymore. And they've continued on and they continue to mentor and inspire the next generation. So I, kudos to to Troop One and it was an honor to be there.
Lisa, could I add one piece to that?
Absolutely.
Unrecognizable, I think it's Mr. Stewart's amazing accomplishment as part of his project for that boardwalk. He managed to get equivalent, a graduate degree in dealing with town boards. There was a months and months and months long process there with the Conservation Commission. The conservators of the property there, the neighbors, there are many neighbors' concerns. And I was very impressed with his skill at dealing with all of those things. Basically, he listened, he responded, came back again and again and again to the permitting boards with answers to the concerns that were raised and finally got it done. So it turned out to be an expert in terms of managing that process against a series of issues that I'm sure he didn't anticipate when he started that project. He thought it was going to be a building project, and it was a public relations and permitting maze navigation project. He did a wonderful job, so.
One last, one last thing to add to Sam, I'm kind of in the spirit of that is, you know, these kids raise a lot of money to get this done. You know, there's a lot of blood, sweat and tears that goes into it from the whole troop and volunteers. So they do a tremendous job and they deserve to be recognized. That's it, Chelsea, I'm sure this will come out as well.
Sure.
Sure. So Mooney Field likes and when we put the agenda together, I should have added nearly tennis court lights because both were activated last week. These were both projects from 2017. So I know the Rec Commission with Tim Davis's leadership and the newly named Algonquin Baseball Softball Association, used to be super little league, are very excited to have the lights working down at Mooney. And my kids cannot wait to play under the lights, but it's not, it's dark too, too late now. So they won't be playing on that probably for a while. But it was a nice ceremony at Mooney. And I would encourage residents to go down to the tennis courts. And I think the lights stay on until nine o'clock. There's a button you can hit stays on for thirty minutes. So that's exciting. So congratulations to Rec and, and the Baseball Softball Organization.
One thing to that.
Sure.
So in looking at some of the things we've learned from prior light projects, I think the, the way that they've gone a little bit over and above, that the lights are on, I believe, a fifteen minute timer. And you can re-hit it to get another fifteen minutes. So it's definitely efficient and there won't be lights on when they don't need to be on. So.
So how late do you actually play tennis till nine? And you, so the button won't work after nine?
No, right.
But I was impressed at the control of light scatter from all of the lights. They did a great job technically versus the old style fun lights that light up the entire neighborhood.
Yeah.
Still, you can see them, but it's very, very focused on the playing fields.
And I should give credit to the planning board for working with all the different stakeholders to make sure that it works for the neighbors. And it's a, you know, good neighborhood to have the element there. So it is amazing to see how they look. It was, yeah, you have to drive by.
Well, the guy that actually led the effort at town meeting back in whatever sixteen, seventeen, he was the guy called Secret Stone. He's one of the friends of mine. And unfortunately, his kids have kind of aged out, so they're not going to play there. So they're not, but they went, he went, okay, they sent me a picture. And you could see perfectly how focused those lights were just in that picture. That's, I'm saying, who believe how little light scattered, which of course was a big concern back at that town meeting is the, the, the light going on to the neighbors there. So.
Some along the way, yeah.
Yep.
My next update actually didn't make it on the agenda because it happened after we did the agenda again. But if you noticed that we had a class in our meeting tonight from St. Mark's. And they invited a select board member to go speak to them. And so I went last week and it was an hour and fifteen minutes of Q and A. And I absolutely loved it. So at the end of their semester, they do a two-week class. And they picked government civic class. And I, I really didn't know what I was walking into because I didn't prep anything. And it was great. It was so nice to see young men and women asking questions about what's going on in our local town. And I, I thoroughly enjoyed it. And so as we were talking, we started talking about how prepping for meetings and et cetera. And I walked through our agenda for tonight. And they said, oh, we're going to switch our, our day around on Tuesday and come. And I was like, great, you should. And it was so nice to see them get engaged and, you know, listen to what we had to talk about and see true government in action. So just want to give a shout out to them for participating.
Be nice to hear what they think now.
Yeah, I know. So I told them I'm going to come back and get them to tell me what we should do on our next agenda.
Give them the test.
And my last update is on Memorial Day. So we had a beautiful ceremony yesterday morning. It got a little warm towards the end. But it was really well attended. Lisa and I got to march in the parade. And it was, it's just a really nice event to show, you know, gratitude for, for those who kind of gave up the, the ultimate sacrifice, right? And it was, it was, it was just beautiful. And, you know, I, I just encourage us to participate in those kinds of events because they, they're really meaningful and it, you know, really hits home on, you know, what freedom is. So it was, it was beautiful. So.
If I could add two minor points to that. We also did have the associate member of the board march with us as well. Mister, young Mister Malinowski walked all the way from his house with his mom and then marched in the parade. I don't know whether he regretted that or not. By the time it was done, it was a lot of walking. And I think people appreciated seeing that, you know. Brian Shipman used to do that with his kids. They would march in the parade as well. So, and I will just say that Ms. Malinowski's speech representing the board was very heartfelt. And I really truly think people understood based on an experience she had within her home family. So Chelsea, thank you. Thank you for sharing what you did and you certainly touched a lot of people on the other side.
Thank you. It was an honor to do it on behalf of the board. I heard Mr. Glunden was there too and was not, that uniform he was in was not his uniform. It was his father's uniform. So that's important too.
So I don't necessarily have anything, but I will note one thing today with Miss Munster attending tonight and Miss Gail still sitting in the room. The one-stop application, grand application was filed today. This is the same project that the town attempted last year. Had a lot of good feedback, if I recall, on the application. It's just too many applications, not enough money. And again, this is looking to address economic housing opportunities for Route Nine and looking to deal with that with the corridor issue. Look at some zoning code issues for the Business Highway Industrial Zone there as long as it's not. And providing recommendations for reclassification areas to reflect the economic housing opportunities identified. So we will, we did get notification. Everything was successfully received. We'll find out something in October, November as to where we stand with that.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. We've got A through F. What does anyone want to hold from A to F? Okay, we've got F. And I want to hold B. D. And I want to hold E. Sorry.
I, I have some amendments for minutes.
So A. So the only thing that's left is C.
As usual.
Yeah, yeah. We got to try, right? Okay, now do you guys normally just go ahead and approve the ones that's left? All right, so do you have a motion to, to basically approve the ten K from Facebook?
So move.
Second.
Okay, on favor? Okay, start at the top minutes. Right, so we've got several to. So let's start with April twelve, let's see if there's any edits.
Sure. Again, the minutes are very good. Very good. On line one hundred and fifty-eight, there should be a period after renovated. And on line one ninety-seven, was, is missing, I should say, Ms. Malinowski stated she was comfortable. For the April twenty.
Anybody else on April twelve?
I had a change previously that was included, so I'm fine.
Lisa's fine. Okay, let's go on to May second.
May second, they all have one. A typo, I think. The board voted to enter it into executive session. Should be the board voted to enter into executive session. That's the same overall.
Okay, same for all four, May second, May fifth, May ninth, and May seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay, so same change on all four. All right, everybody agree? Okay, anything else on those four? So we also got the full set of minutes on day seventeen. So do, are we approving both sets for, okay, so how are, the both open session minutes are the seventeenth, so how are we differentiating?
Five thirty.
One to five thirty, one to six thirty.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're approving the five thirty and then the six thirty we'll put on the fourteen?
Yes.
No, that's okay. I just want to make sure that I know what I'm doing. Okay, so is there a motion to approve April twelve, May second, April twelve as amended, May second, May fifth, May ninth, May seventeenth at five thirty as amended with the same change?
So move.
Second. All favor. So that's four zero one, so I'm going to stay because I did not add those things. Okay, next one that got filled was approved in the staff performance for just the year twenty-three. Okay, I've asked Mr. Book about this. He gave me a very logical explanation, but it still makes no sense to me. Why do we do this? These are people that employed at will. I agree they've got a title. But I don't understand what we're accomplishing here. What, what, why do we have to do this?
I'm assuming, I'm sort of saying, because we've always done it. I'm assuming it's because they're, if they're a, a employee at will, which is basically a one-year contract. So this is just. Well, I know, contract is one word.
You could say bye-bye tomorrow.
I'm assuming. I, I don't know, Mark.
You can. An at-will employee could be here today and.
Correct.
All of these positions have always been appointed for one year. There are some exceptions. You've got the town account who needs to be appointed for either a three or five year.
Yep.
We've settled on a three.
Yep.
And I think that is the only.
I, I would assume part of that, Kathy, is just for transparency as well. Typically, it sits in the consent agenda. There's no real discussion on it. But if the public wants to go through the packet, they can see, you know, who the employees are, who.
I see no downside. I just don't, I just didn't understand the reason for doing it. You know, we've had some things last year where we actually questioned why we didn't. And then when we questioned, we realized we didn't have to do them or we could have done them a different way. So I just want to make sure that wasn't in that bucket. I mean, I'm fine doing this. Again, I see no downside, but it just didn't make sense to me.
I mean, I think this is something that Mark could certainly just do under the town administrator. But other than just for transparency and having it in the packet for the public to see who the employees are that they pay.
I like having the packet. I mean, I hire people as well and there's no term for that appointment. Typically, maybe municipal.
It maybe does. Maybe that's what I'm just, because I agree.
But again, I like publishing who they are periodically so that.
Yeah. Simply transfer. Okay, so no downside, downside, I'm done. And also like the alternate building inspector, the share pay through the revolving account.
Yep.
So they're not necessarily like regular payroll.
Showing up anywhere else.
Potentially. And then the, the chaplain, like he has a role, right? But I, I think then you just know who to reference that.
Yeah, but you, you don't know that. You can't tell how someone's being paid here. That's not, that's not on this up. Again, I'm not, it almost feels a lot of time. I just thought I'd go ahead and ask why we do this.
I move to approve the annual staff one for a second.
All in favor? Okay, check it out. Okay, next one is summer nights. This one's really simple. The reason I tell it is my question is, do we send thank you letters? I don't care how much the money is. Now, there's like, you know, five to ten on here. Do we send thank you letters when we get donations as a matter of course?
So I would assume recreation does that, Kathy?
On this one.
Yep.
They definitely do. Okay, what about other donations that come to us that, that is not rec? Do we always do that? I hope so.
So for example, like about. I don't see. Yes. So, you know, items like that, the annual donations we get from, you know, things we do send, I can go tomorrow.
But it's an annual fund we get periodically and we send it for those.
I believe, I believe those come from the fire treatment.
Yeah.
You look at the donations on the, the summer nights one, these are companies that have done this year, every year, every year. They are extremely supportive and they should be thanked. Okay, so.
And they are, and I think during summer nights and there are signs acknowledging them as well at summer nights, Kathy. So I, I can't imagine that recreation is not, that, that's probably standard policy on this because some of these are a lot of men.
Okay, Andrew, you make a motion on this one?
I move that we accept the donations for the recreation department's annual summer nights event totaling sixty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
I do want to point out that with that donation, that without St. Mark's participation donation, fireworks would be very difficult. So.
Maybe we could collect mattresses and have a bonfire instead.
Is the chief still on, Chelsea?
Supervise. Supervise.
Of course.
Yeah.
Well, marshmallow stuff.
Summer nights are very important. People really love it and it is very.
It is, sure.
Okay, next one is to dissolve the ad hoc ARCA committee. Sam, I know you questioned maybe it's a little premature, but they absolutely want it. They're ready to go and go out and have a good, have a good night together. So I double-checked with the chair that she would like to see it and solve it and things of the job.
I deferred events.
Any further question on that one?
Just to thank them again. Great, great job that they've done.
Yep. Well, job well done. All right, motion to dissolve the, formally dissolve the ARCA committee?
So move.
Second. All in favor? Okay, the next one I also want to, so Chelsea, you want to start?
Yes. So I had a question on the capital item on this one. And Mark, I don't know if you know the background on that.
So I have enough information to be dangerous, but Ms. Gallagher is also in the room and can add color. So the, the upgrade to the Intruder Firearm System at Hosmer for sixteen thousand dollars. I, I will, I will follow in the sort a little bit and say, yes, that should have been a capital item. Should have, you know, gone to the committee. Again, that's a, it's a liability issue. And, and I believe that, you know, expediency was, you know, was, was the first thought. But, but yes, that's something that should have gone to capital committee. Probably would have been taken off as quickly as, as it would have gotten on the plan, but.
Yeah, but that's not the point. It's supposed to be there. We really need to run things right in there. We agree to. They're a great committee. And so it's our.
They, they do work. I've also, I've already had conversations with the capital chair on that as well. So acknowledged and, you know, we'll, we'll ensure that, that those items get there and they get through the process.
So my question's a little bit different. I mean, it is going back to the policy that you guys have adopted as far as looking at line items when they get overdrawn. So what does it accomplish to basically approve this when it's already done? I don't understand what we're trying to do. If, if she came to us ahead of time and said, I think this is going to happen, what do you think? I just don't know what, I mean, it's not synergy. This is a big thing, but even synergy, what, it's there. We're not spending time talking about it likely. So what are we accomplishing by looking at the fact that a couple line items have gotten overdrawn or done instead? We can't change.
We should be getting it ahead of time, not necessarily afterwards. So I think.
You're, you're asking to tell, you, you think we should get it ahead of time?
Yes, we should be. And that's why it's usually on consent because it's like, this is coming and we're going to be over on this. That's usually what happens. So this was more of an anomaly that we got it on the backend. But it's to be proactive and that way we're not sitting at the end of the year at here and going through the budget and saying, well, why were we so over on X line item? So, so that way we do it throughout the year and have it monitored so that it's not a big surprise at the end of the year and so that we're aware of it before it happens. More often than not, it completely makes sense. Something came up and we need to deal with it. And we, and, you know, the department head would know that they can, the, the department head generally knows because it doesn't happen until.
Second, what's up?
Yeah.
Okay, now, there's no such thing as a perfect budget, right? No one's going to come in at the end of the year and say, perfect, 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 perfect. It's always going to be something a little bit over, something a little bit under, it's just like, you can't be that predictable about it. So at the end of the day, I'm still not sure that this is a great use of time. I'm fine with it, but.
So let me give you an example of what prompted this. Paying for a full-time employee out of the expense line items and not having any knowledge of it until after it was already done.
But we used to talk about not being able to do that years ago, that you could, you know, the thing that was second was the salary line. You couldn't, you could not use that to do anything other than salaries. And if you had a vacancy like IT, you leave it alone. At the end of the year, you're going to, you know, you're going to close it up, right? So you can't play around with the salary line, which I still think is a pretty good idea because that one is, is second. You just, you shouldn't be able to do that. So I agree with that.
And, and just so you know where the five thousand dollars came from, so for. And, and just so you know where the five thousand dollars came from, so for FY, mark, keep me honest here. I went through line by line at the end of the year, and I counted up the number of line items that were like, I think I hit like ten thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, and like three thousand dollars. And I think it was like twenty-two line items for five thousand dollars over.
And in total, the whole town.
The whole town budget. It was twenty-two line items that were over five thousand out of sync with what the budget was. And I was like, that sounded like a reasonable.
Totally.
Yes. So that's how we came up with the five thousand, because I agree, I don't want to bog down to three hundred dollars, right?
But. And, and, and Carla's not doing anything. She's not moving money.
No.
When it comes to bottom line, see, because you want to base an interest budget on what you've spent, not on.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I, okay, so I'm fine.
Kind of along those same lines, I think it's important for us to know as we go into the budget season, if we continually see a shortfall somewhere. Then we, if we don't know about it, we can't have the discussion about potentially increasing a budget or a line item.
Well, if you get a shortfall, then it should, you should take care of that. You should basically deal with that with correct budget. It should, that.
Well, but if we don't know.
Going to do it before the third quarter closes, because you're already in budget season. So that's part of the reason why I go through all the budgets every quarter to make sure that, like, I, was it last year, Karen, that we went through? We knew we were going to go over on trash, right? So we knew to increase that. This year it was fuel. We knew we were going to be over, so we increased the budget for act. So those, those are the things that were captured, but like, one-time items are like, oh, we know that's not going to be an issue. So that's fine. But that's part of the reason.
All right, I'm fine.
So I think the whole, the summary is the whole discussion shows the value of that.
I agree.
I move to be approved or request to bottom-line stand the water budget.
Second.
All in favor? Still so hard to get used to doing this. Okay, all right.
Can we take a five-minute recess?
Okay. And so we will recess for five minutes. We'll be back at eight twenty-two. We're still hot. We're still, the mic's still hot.
That mic is still hot.
To stay alive, okay? The mic is hot.
Like, okay, yeah.
This is kind of a bridge year because next year we'll be having a discussion in all of the agreements and similar by law. And, you know, I think that recognizing the holiday and, and, you know, the short financial cost is, is what we have.
Mark, what's the actual date that it falls on?
Falls on Sunday.
It's June nineteenth always, it's Sunday. So this time it'll be the twenty third week.
So you're voting Monday versus Friday?
That's correct. So we're probably, so I would suggest, so it is federal and state holiday. So federal holiday is the nineteenth, the state is celebrating it on the twentieth.
Okay.
So the school, the school department is following the state recognition of the holiday. I would suggest that moving forward, unless there's any issues, that we continue to follow the state, you know, for the holiday, whatever day that happens to fall, so.
Interestingly, I didn't double check this, but Sirnton and Martino said that the state, if it falls on Saturday, is going to recognize it on Saturday, it's not going to be Friday. So I'm, I'm wondering that a little curious, but that's, so I didn't check it, that's what he said though, so it, we're a long way from that happening, you go forward one every day.
Right.
It's a week year, so we're a long way to get to Saturday, but anyway.
Let's not invite issues.
Now, what you said was a little bit different than what I thought you told me previously. I thought that the essential workers were going to be given a choice of being paid or taking the day off between.
So in talking with, you know, so some of the, some of the departments, if it is a contractual holiday, they have the option of being paid for the day or banking the day and then using it at a later date. Now, anything that is banked can't be carryover from one fiscal year to the next. Because the holiday is on June twentieth, it's only ten days left. However, it is the time of year when people like to take vacations, like to use the bank days. I think it's simply going to add more confusion and more coverage issues. And therefore, considering that, you know, this is, this is the board's decision this year, because it is not in any agreement, in any bylaw, that you simply limit it to a paid day for those essential employees and, and not add to some of the other contractual issues regarding holidays that already exist.
So I think it's very important that we do this, it's a really important holiday to this country, right? As far as what it's recognized, so I think it's great that we are doing this before. We have to do it next year, so I'm glad we're doing it voluntarily, and I think it sends a really important message, that's important, so. Anyone else have questions? Anyone disagree with what Mr. Purple's proposals?
No.
But I do agree that they get paid for the day and Mark and I just need to make that clear. Right, like is there some sort of side letter or something?
So I will make that clear in what goes out to, goes out to the departments. I'll, I'll check with Labor Council to see if she feels that a side letter is, is appropriate. Again, it's not something we're going to have to revisit next year, because next year it's already in contract. And it will just, it'll become, at that point, does become a paid holiday as listed, and it is open for either getting paid for the holiday or banking today. But that's next year, so we're just trying to address it this year, which happens to fall ten days before the new contract takes effect.
Alright, so a motion to approve the recognition of June tenth, this June two thousand twenty-two, based on Mr. Purple's recommendation.
So who?
Second, on favor. The next one, setting the date for the special town meeting. To refresh everyone's memory, but probably doesn't be refreshing. One of the things that happened at town meeting because we were looking like we might end up meeting the third night is that Ms. Melanowski approached the planning board who graciously agreed to postpone Marcus twenty-seven and twenty-eight. As long as. Okay, so.
Twenty-seventh trees?
Yes.
They agreed to do trees, but then I think twenty-eight was also.
And definitely postponed.
Okay, so twenty-seven. As long as the select board at that point agreed that we were going to have a special town meeting and they would go first, they got the first article. And so that was agreed to, it was stated at the town meeting, and so that's, that's where we are. So we are going to have a, well, special town meeting, right now there's not. On the step line, but my guess is by the time we have. Okay, yeah, so did everyone get the email or project from Mr. Hickory, who has gone through and looked at Trotter here, as far as the guilty, looked at holidays like him before, and has come back with his recommendations as to what dates he recommends. He's ranked them once through, whatever. We checked with Mr. Samino, he is fine with these dates, we checked with Jay Kellerman, he is fine with two, three, four, five, and six, but not one. Mr. Purple and I talked, and we both agree that maybe one is not a great one, because it's right after hair today. And therefore, if there's any expanding awareness to be done, there's no time to do it, please, y'all, on Monday, Tuesday's day of meeting. So we both would prefer number two instead of number one. And this time we can't go to number one anyways, so it's, it's on. Mr. Samino suggested that the meeting start at seven P M., so there, there's, that would be the time. So discussion on where, electric calendars, right? What, so number one, does number two work with everybody? Let's just try and go two, three, four, five. Is anyone, can, can anyone not do two?
Just to be clear, that's October thirteenth, just for the public.
And number thirteen, can I ask a question about these dates? When, when Jim was putting them together, there was no consideration of Saturdays? I know, I understand after the twenty-second, it doesn't work.
I had heard, and I believe from Ms. Melanowski, that she did not believe Sarah's at that time of year, because all the sports going on would be a major choice.
I just want to make sure that we're present of the position and the vote that was taken a couple of years ago, tell me for Saturday.
But as you know, the group that was, that probably gave that their concern was sports, and that's why they wanted it early. So it was lots of sports going on, so I think we probably will make them happen.
That, that vote though was really like a changeable time.
Yes, it was.
It was, but I think it was still.
Trying to find a time that the sports really can start in full force.
I just want to be respectful.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we were talking about November.
Yeah.
You know, that would be maybe in between, I, I just.
See, my card November, because we did November last year, right?
Well, it would have to be much later in November, but yeah.
It, it, it really, I thought was too late, because you're, you're already in person, you're about to season, right? It really, you know, you don't know how, at least I, I advise you, so we leave when eight was the town meeting day. I mean, I don't see how we were gotten done last week in March. And so right now, we think that the annual town meeting is going to be March, that's what the bylaw says. You know, who knows, right? What COVID does, but right now, we've got to assume that the regular town meeting is going to be March, so if you do November, you really start to push against it.
My other comment on the seven P M. start, are we doing all of the intro things that we do at a little town meeting or not?
We didn't do that at the last special, but didn't do a lot of it because of COVID, right? And so they were trying to make it as, trying to get into possible kids, so I don't know the answer to that, I don't know what, what.
So my concern is not, if we're doing, if we're doing a lot of intros and Article One, or, well, I'm going to call it Article pre, pre-article. Up so I can uphold my commitment. I just would be concerned to start, we, it was an hour of, so then we wouldn't be starting until eight. I just want to, I'm okay with the seven if we're going to get right into the articles.
Well, starting at six thirty like we did this time certainly helped compared to prior years where we, you know, sat around, wait for porn, wait for porn, sometimes we get started at eight. So I do think six thirty helped, I mean, and we really pushed it, you know, to look how like we want to. Mr. Samino may, I don't know if he's, I mean, he's texted, he, he said.
Oh, he's here. Okay. I didn't see him in the audience.
I know he, Chelsea is in favor of eliminating Article One.
Mr. Samino, you should be able to talk.
Am I, first of all, I don't know if you guys can hear me, I don't see you on my phone anymore. Technology is kicking my ass, so am I audible and am I recognized?
Yes, you are.
Okay. I, 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 I'll, I'll make it official, I've, I've sort of unofficially mentioned after last, after town meeting in last month. I, 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 I don't, I have no desire to have Article One on a, a town meeting warrant ever again, okay? So it's, it's a superfluous article, the floor can hear reports anytime it wants, it doesn't need to pass an article to do that. And so, especially for a special, you guys put whatever articles on the special warrant you want, and that's all we'll do. So I, I don't, I don't anticipate any preliminaries, let alone extensive ones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Maybe does the thirteenth work for at least the planning board members that are here, as far as, you know, given you guys want to be very important at night? You're going to be first.
Okay, did you mind if we asked, Marnie is on the, Marnie, if you are available on the thirteenth? Okay, never mind, let's never raise your hand, we're good then.
All right, so let us jump right into. Seven, I still think sounds better, I mean, you know, you've got people getting home from work, they got to eat, now they're not going to a lot of those times, that's our whole time, right? But I still think seven probably works better for most people who are trying to run home, eat, feed kids, get them settled and, and get there. But I, it, and Maritor, you know, this is his meeting, right, and you said seven o'clock, so I think we probably ought to at least stick with the seven for now.
I think, I don't think we're going to have as, as full of agenda obviously as we did at prior town meeting, so I think seven, I think is probably.
One for the start accent.
Seven, start accent.
Sam, any comment?
Fine, yeah.
So can we have a motion to basically hold the fall special town meeting on October thirteenth at seven P M. at Trotter?
So who?
Second. So can we come up with a proposed schedule for when everything needs to be in for a warrant?
Opening the war.
All of that.
And we better do that pretty soon, because somebody's not, you know, it's going to be on, it will flood pass, right? You know, we've got one meeting, we've got the fourteenth, we've got one meeting in July, that's not the planning meeting, we've got one office, right? And so we ought to at least do this no later than the July meeting, right? So maybe July?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Any rate, next, discussion of the ARCA committee recommendations for the expenditure, so if you now can cheer your. Yes, I brought with me the total report that, just. Yes, that Andrea presented to us, I've got that anybody wants to refer to as far as some details here. So all this is, is, this is their numbers, I haven't changed any numbers, I've just reworded things. So the bottom line, if you scroll down to the very bottom, Chelsea, you see is the seven hundred dollars that's left after the recommendations. And they did make the adjustment that we asked them to as far as the max that could be spent, spent on the consultant. So they took it out, for the most part, out of sidewalks. Okay, so it does mean, basically spends pretty much everything. So what I wanted to talk about tonight is, are we ready to start talking about some of the recommendations? Not going to get through them all, this is going to take a while, and I don't think we should get through them all, you know? Got a lot to spend this money, new things may come up that we want to use our report. But I thought there's probably some things we really should at least start thinking about. There's one that is time sensitive, which is the senior center. And, and they made, so I tried to order those in a way that made sense timewise. You guys can disagree, we can move things around, but at least it's a starting point.
So Kathy, are you going to acknowledge the email that we got from the Chair of Capital regarding?
Which one?
Looking to vet, sorry, wanting to vet the four projects for the capital planning policy.
Yeah, so we're not approving. We're not ready to spend the money, all I'm trying to do tonight is basically go through some of them and see what you think about them, right? So yes, I got Jason's email, and absolutely, there are many things on here that need to go through capital as far as the details, and they come back to us, you know? But if we don't have it to begin with, capital's not very good at, right? So we've got to at least say, yeah, we like it, we think it should be considered, and then they'll take it, and they'll come back to us. Anybody disagree with that, as far as accountants? Okay, so far so good.
So this is a little bit different, we've approved, this is going to be a different motion than what we already have approved.
We're not going back to those, I listen, so those are done.
Right, so the motion is actually to move it forward through the process, not to approve the actual project.
No.
Okay.
Just, just, is there anything you want to throw out? Now, you know, there's one that's related to another genomic, which is the more per corporate. So I've added that here because that's, you know, if we're going to approve it, we got to pay for it, and this is one way to pay for it. So that one, we may want to approve tomorrow, right? If we really want to get this thing done quickly, that's got to have money, and there's only a couple ways to provide that money. So can you go now, back to very top?
Sure.
Okay, so it is fixed now, so the very top, the, the, you know, it's not, okay, so Chelsea, can you have this? Remember the twenty, and put the twenty down below for the red A D A? This one? Yeah, so that's in the wrong, that, you guys have not approved, you did not approve that one, I said it's in the wrong place, so now put that down. Put it between, you know, insert a line between twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Okay.
Right, include there. Okay, now back to the top. Okay, so those four things the select board has previously voted on to do, so as far as I'm concerned, they're done. I mean, you still may need, I don't myself, for the fifty-nine, let's take more time. Great, I kill, that's a real number, that's a contract.
Yeah.
Where the work is underway, it's, I think it's a fixed price contract, so that was probably done as far as.
What is it going to cost?
Oh, yeah, we're a long way from fixing, so that's the.
Right, yeah.
The architect fee, that's a done deal, it's nineteen and change, so that, they're well underway as far as coming back with the plans to, to add, there's been a long front, right? So that was pretty much done. The A D A upgrades, this is one I went back and called to Jason, and he, his last email was, you get it, and I said, sort of. Okay, so it's my understanding that the fifty has been approved, but do we know specifically for what? Have they come back, has staff come back and said, this is what we wanted for? Because, you know, they wanted a hundred at town meeting, right? And they, 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 like all the first fifty, but I haven't seen any plans as far as what they want to spend it on.
Wasn't this fifty, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, this fifty was for facilities?
So facilities is actually, this is, these are based on the A D A self-valuation transition plan.
Yeah.
And the recommendations that were made by the consultant, things that need to be fixed.
Okay.
This is to allow staff to begin addressing a lot of those issues. I can kind of boil it down into mostly signage and, and door handles.
Yeah.
And bringing those in compliance, table heights, counter heights, you know, a lot of those issues, you know, looking to, looking to address. Seeing how far that money is, is going to carry us.
So this is under John Karen's purview?
Right.
Okay, and does he, he knows he's got fifty thousand dollars?
He does.
And it's now his decision how to spend it, is that, is it kind of like the hundred thousand for his?
It is, as long as it adheres to some of the items that were brought up within the.
So do you expect to hear back from him, so I'm saying, does he, he's got the, for me now to spend fifty thousand dollars?
Okay. You have days of work regularly.
Yeah, so what he's, what he's been doing is, is been taking the plant and and making updates and then noting what items have been completed. For example, there was something that was down, said the fifty thousand dollars, but there was the money that's approved for the, the painting and the carpets and everything to be done at the library. There were some issues that were identified in the A D A plan for the bathroom, well, and they were painting the bathroom, they took care of those issues. Okay, so therefore, you know, those issues are no longer, are no longer wrong, you know, things that concern ourselves, but for compliance purposes in the plan, so. So these are, these are items that staff will be able to do, hopefully, you know, that is not, that fifty thousand is not reflecting any labor. Because again, we'll do them in-house, it's simply going to be buying the signage, buying the handles, and, and taking care and buying any materials that are needed for staff to make those corrections.
So check, check.
So check, check, and happy to, you know, maybe, you know, after the summer weekend, have an update as to where we are with the, with the plan. Again, it's a living, you know, the one thing we need to, and I remember when, when Suckworth, remember Haley, although he probably referred to the Selectman Haley. You know, sat here and we talked about this, you know, it's like, well, maybe we should just, you know, take a bond for everything, try to get this done now. It's a living plan that we're going to continue to take things off of, continue to add things to. And, you know, so I think it's, it's, it'll be good to see progress in all the plan, that's the goal, to continue to move forward on this and not let it stack.
And Kathy, this is outside of some of the upgrades that John has already made, and costs that have already been realized from the plan and things that have already been done.
Well, I've got great faith in what John Karen does, he seems to always kind of, you know, do things for a lot less than we thought, so good for him. Okay, next one is the Board of Health, the funding that Select Board approved before town meeting as far as the additional cost of the directors salary could just be a twenty-three. It's a really round number, but Chelsea assumes it's right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's done too, and so Carl will take care of that as we get those on, to, to make sure we cover that. So those four looks like they're done to me, right? The next three are just the admin cost of the ARCA grant, and I think we all, we agree, we all agree in those.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on.
And the, so the forty-nine thousand, though, could be broken out between, I think there's some from cares, potentially some from FEMA, and then if we don't spend it all. So the forty-nine, forty-nine thousand's worst case scenario.
It's a cap.
Yeah, right, because we have a map, that's the max contract, but that doesn't mean that we'll spend it all.
Okay, now what do you mean, because this is ARCA money.
Yeah.
So what do you, if that's the next contract, what do you mean FEMA in?
So there, and you can keep me honest here, but there is a, there's some portion of the contract that allows for the consultant to do reviews of our, of our FEMA application or our reimbursement to FEMA, and double checking and making sure things are ticking and tying, and just having a second set of eyes on anything that goes to FEMA as well as cares. So we, for our care submission, had the consultant do, we, I say, the finance team, do some, some overview of the submission that was going.
Okay, but it's not that you're saying that we can take some of that, if it were over to be in reverse, be reimbursed from cares. Can you just point out that some of that money's been used for that purpose and not all reviewing the law, the ARCA as far as any of that?
No, but I believe that we can include the money, the time that was spent on the FEMA application on, as a FEMA reimbursement as well. That's what I'm saying, yeah, so I'm saying this is worst case scenario, like let's say FEMA denies.
Yeah, but until it's done, so we leave it there for now.
Yeah, leave it there for now, but I'm just saying, like, that's not a set in stone number.
We definitely should do exactly that.
Yeah, that's what you're doing.
Potential liability.
Right, because we don't have the reimbursements.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm focusing on, tell us that, let's try to get some of it.
Yeah. And she, Carla is doing that.
Yeah. Okay, so now we get to the new stuff that we might want to consider tonight, maybe you've got something else on your list, so this is just my first shot at this. I have no pride here, if you want to move things around and say, no, we're not ready for it. There are things on here that definitely we're going to go through capital, so we're not trying to say go. We're just basically looking at these to see if you agree that we're ready to start having these looked at, okay? So the first one is, I think the most times it's one, and that is the addition to the senior center. The number may be high, but John Karen, I talked to him this week, he said, maybe not, with cost going up as fast as they are, well, no soon, right? So he thinks it's enough, he does say that, but, you know, inflation's still eight percent year over year. I heard a story today about paper being five times what it used to be, so there's still quite a bit of inflation, a lot of stuff, and, and building on the tourist, certainly call for it. So anyway, architect is underway, he's there as instructions, John thinks we'll have the plans in two to three months. He thinks that big will happen really fast, and the building will happen really fast, and by this time next year, we should have a nice new room.
So I've heard that lumber's going down, actually.
Good.
So I, I would like to go with a lower number on, on this, especially until we get the architect.
What's, what's the downside, just leave it to me, we're not going to spend this, right? I mean, we're a long way from coming else that, we'll move it, we're going to have the number in two or three months, right? So this is changing when we get the number, and I hope you're right, I hope one of this comes down, I hope it's two as a personal thing.
I'm fine with a three, because I think there are other things that are waiting as well.
So what about furniture, what about last, is that, I mean, I don't know if that was all, so maybe other things you're going to have to buy too, so I just leave it three eighty. And then, just like the forty-nine, it very well may come down. John said, he suggested, so he did say, he suggested this because, you know, he just doesn't have any insurance surprises right now. But I hope you're right, Chelsea, I hope this lasts, and I hope it comes way down all the time you start.
I'd rather go with a smaller number, and then if we need to revisit, then I would rather do that.
So Andrew?
Okay, I had a, I'm looking back at the committee's presentation, I thought they had a higher number for this.
They had four hundred in total, and twenty of that is.
Oh, that included the ARCA.
So it's their number.
Well, Chelsea, is your thing, did you go with a lower number?
Yeah.
Help, helps what?
Responses or?
Yeah, I'd rather go with.
So you think some, so I'm sure you're specific, you really, you think that someone might see this?
Maybe.
You never know.
I'd rather.
I mean, if you that, I mean, that can go either way, I mean, if you have a couple of, just like one bid, or two bids, and somebody is looking to see it, well, you know, look, I've got, pretty much got a full dance card for the summer and everything in that, but you know what? I'll put in a bid, I know what they're looking for, you know, and, and, you know, that may come closer to the number that, that, that's out there. But if it's, if you get five or six people bidding on it, you know, then it's going to be probably a little bit more aggressive.
The pencils will be sharpened more, for sure.
But the horse is out of the barn.
I'm, I'm fine with, I'm not going to.
So that's four hundred.
If we lower it, if the, the consensus is to lower it, then you can always put it back in, if that's, I mean, we're going to know the answer to this in a very short period of time.
I, I think if the message, the ARCA report may be out there, but I think several discussions tonight on this, and I would be fine with lowering it, but not potentially utilizing that money in any place else.
So if you look, the biggest chunk of the money still left on the remaining ARCA is two million one, right?
Yeah.
So, and again, you guys may want to pick up some of those tonight, those I think are the ones that are going to take more discussion. So I, I mean, I tried to figure, I tried to pick out what I thought were the easier ones, and the ones that might be time sensitive, that was, you know, it was either easy or time sensitive.
I mean, I'm fine, Kathy, with, with taking a position on senior center tonight, to move this forward, but I, I, I would like to see that number, I agree.
I, I think we need to do that one, just to know that, when I said it there. Okay, so Chelsea, what, you want the number to be?
Three twenty-five.
Sam?
Three eighty.
Andrew? What's your number?
So what, what was the basis for the three twenty-five?
That was the original, that's the amount that we're carrying in the capital plan. Okay, and, okay, so how old is that number? So that number is. Capital. I mean, fall?
Yeah, yeah.
Fall of twenty-one.
Yeah, when, when it was supported, yes.
You're on capital, so it's, so.
It was the fall of twenty-one, when we discussed this and discussed supporting it as it went forward as well. Three twenty-five, I know at that time, it was also talked about what the number may be, but three twenty-five was where capital left off.
But it's still a pretty loosey-goosey number, right? I mean, there's no, we obviously don't have a bid, we don't have plans. So it's still a scientific. That's why, so.
Two percent.
So Andrew?
So, so if you go with three twenty-five, it's still a three eighty, you open up the additional money and then it just goes on there.
Yeah, it's not going to get spent that fast, by the time we have this number, we're not going to spend the other two point one million dollars, so.
Correct.
So I don't think there's any point in getting too excited about this, as far as whatever we.
Okay, I'll go with the three twenty-five.
Me too.
All right, so I will too.
You don't have to, I took this.
Yeah. And then draw. I don't have, so Chelsea, you're going to have to put it in, because I don't have it dropped. So put it back, I tell you what, you put it sidewalk, she took it out sidewalk, so put it in sidewalk, or we could just say miscellaneous, but either put it in sidewalk, because that's where they took it out for the consultant. So I need to put it back in there, because they had a higher number to begin with.
And just on a point, sidewalks, that's, that's an item that I think deservedly has a higher number because of survey responses. People over and over say this is a capital group, the people.
Senior Center was pretty popular too.
Yes, no, I know that, and that's something that, because that is a preview to us from at least two budget cycles before, right? But going back to a year ago, when this, we started thinking about how we would spend this money, right? And then some of us thought, let's go for one big thing.
Yeah.
Simply by virtue of having a committee, we are going to, you know, slice it up among the different departments, but I still like the. Simply by virtue of having a committee, we are going to, you know, slice it up among the different departments, but I still like the idea of preserving, you know, a bigger number you can there.
I agree. I mean, I think with this one too, this one's slated for the capital plan. Could have been a bonded article, so it, it is tax abatement in the long run, right?
So pretty, pretty small thing to bond, uh, let's just do it with a bunch of things, um. Okay, but again, all we're going to do tonight is say, we agree, I hope that ARCA money is going to be used to fund us. This, this is one item we agree with them, um, on.
Well, that's, that's an easy thought.
Yeah, I, I, that's why I started with that one.
Yeah.
Um, you, you know, Andrew's right, if we, if we sit down and find out this, and on our own, made a list of what to use, three point one million dollars for our list. Nobody's list would be the same. We might have some similarities and I'd be some things, but everybody's going to come up with a different way to use this money, right? This is what six hundred seventy-four people told us to use it for.
Yeah.
Um, this is a committee that we asked to do this. They debated long and hard on this. And so I just wanted to start with the written donations in, we just took them off. Okay, um, everybody, so this is vote on these one at a time, so we know we've got to vote, um, on each one and not, um, mush them all together. Do you want to go on this one?
Yeah.
All the motions, Chelsea, as far as we think we actually vote.
Alright, I, I move that the select board, um, support pursuing the senior center additional space for three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Um, I think you're using ARCA funds.
Using our.
Yeah, and that's what we're doing here, so.
Yeah.
So more supports, using our funds to basically build the extra women's senior center.
But this, we, we still want it to go, so there's still a process, though, that has to go through capital, so.
We just know how it's going to be funded, as I was saying.
I just want to make sure that my motion is not to just go off spending money.
A whole lot to do before we actually, um.
Yeah, okay.
Capital's been very involved with this one. They will, I think they're, they're going to continue to show.
Yeah, so, okay.
Okay, so we're, we're not going to buy just capital. We said, we agree it's going to be funded by ARCA. That's the motion. Right, do we have a second? All in favor of using, um, ARCA funds to fund the senior center additions, so yay, five zero. Um, one point I want to make after, to believe with this, and who has made this recently, uh, someone's going to say, hey. You know, with the school research subcommittee, you know, we did two demographic studies. Uh, the first one was a entity called NASDAQ. I wasn't surprised as results, as far as school population, I was amazed at what they're projecting as far as the senior population. One-third of this town is going to be seniors, um, in the next few years, I mean, one-third. Yeah, so we really got to focus on seniors. That's when we do our planning meeting, I, that's when my idea is to really make sure they're really thinking about the seniors in this town. Because they truly going to, um, explore this, right?
Okay, next one.
From anybody sitting here. Okay, um, who knows about the next one as far as what is intended for rec-related ADA upgrades?
Mark, we had talked about this briefly in the past. It has to do with, so drinking fountains.
This is what I think. Yeah, we, we had talked about this, I think a large portion of the, of the self-control transition plan recommendations dealt with accessibility to and around our fields.
Yeah.
And, um, there was a conversation about this at capital. And, um, actually, um, Mr. Shoner from capital was assigned to work with me. And, um, when, you know, when, when, at a moment, uh, we're, we're going to convene a discussion with a member from S-PAC. Um, the rec, um, rec director, couple of other people. And take a look at putting together accessibility plans for all the deficiencies for the fields that were identified. So that we can be shovel-ready to put out these, um, to put out these improvements. Maybe we want to make the decision to put them all out at once and have one contractor addressing these, or if we want to do them piece-meal. Depending on funding opportunities, whether it's CPC or, um, potentially, um, you know, LOP. So I believe that is what that money is.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, any comments as far as what Mark said, as far as approving the concept of using twenty thousand dollars of ARCA money to make sure, um, things like fields are ADA compatible?
Yeah, I'm supportive. This was one of the larger expenses within the, the plan was giving the field up to date. This is a small first to pay to start the process.
This sounds like it is.
So I moved that the select board support using ARCA funds for ADA upgrades, um, under recreation.
All in favor? So this is a new second every time. Okay, alright, next one is, uh, this is in the mental health area. Um, so let me start out with the first one, um, because I, I wonder, I wonder about that one. Okay, so as we, I'm probably on this now, we are, we get the friends of the, the five one C three that supports the town department, the friends of Southwood, he's pushing, signed a contract with, um, William James College to provide, um, services, we call it the interface contract, so that town residents, when they need help, they need to find providers. They can make one phone call and there's a lot of levels there to help them find what they need. So, um, so far so good. Um, twenty-five thousand dollars is probably a little bit more than it's going to be needed. So we've got it funded through six thirty twenty-three. So this would be for the fiscal year of twenty-four, so Chelsea, you questioning me on that? Nope, okay, no, no, um, so this would be seven one twenty-three, six thirty twenty-four, as far as the package. So the friends have put money in this along, so the town hasn't, well. The town, except for the school, right? So, you know, it depends on whether you look at school budget separately or not. I don't, you know, it's part of town. So if you just look at the town budget, we have not absorbed any of this heretofore. It's been funded by the friends group, by, um, the Southwood Community Fund. And the school budget, the school budget has taken money here, so that's how it's been funded here. So we haven't seen it in our town budget yet. So this would be the first, now, if we don't do this, then we'd have to consider probably for six thirty twenty-four, because I don't think, um, Southwood Community Fund, once we begin. They like to do things once, and so if we do it twice, um, could be bad. Um, so I don't think they're going to do it. And so, you know, saving to schools, that's us, right? It's all, it's still tax money. So if we don't do this, then we probably are going to have to put it into the budget if we think it is something that should be there for six thirty twenty-four.
So do you view this as a bridge to, is the intent for even dealing to eventually put that within the budget? Is this a bridge to that?
At some point, okay.
I agree. I think it's an easy enough question, I just want to make sure that.
And this would be a bridge, yeah, so we delay it one more year by doing this, right? Um, and we can do it two years, but, um, that's, that's the proposal is to, to lengthen that bridge.
Remember, I'm good, thank you.
We'll have another follow-up questions, but Lisa asked a very questionable.
Sorry.
The concept of this is, just like for Board of Health, we have used some pandemic-era emergency assistance funds to bridge, which are used for staffing needs, personnel, as opposed to capital expenses. Would be knowledge that these are probably going to come from the expenses, they're going to be.
I would slightly赞同 with what you said, because this was put into place before COVID.
Okay, I don't know, you're right.
So I wouldn't call this, yeah, I, I, I can distinguish what, all the things we've done was trying to, to keep the board health budget low, right? Um, this got put in place, it got funded, um, we've heard now that it seems to be relatively successful. Sarah, we'll ask her, and she'll come before we actually do it and make sure that it's something she's recommended to continue to do. But right now, it looks like they're pretty, um, um, correct, or they, they like it, so.
So Kathy, is that the full cost?
The contract was supposed to be twenty for two thousand twenty-two, but they kind of messed up, so we only get eighteen. So the save is twenty, um, it goes up, you know, the next year twenty-two. So the factor twenty-five is probably a little much for us for the first year. It is, it is, and so they know how many times you've said that's what they then proposed the next contract. And this, and we're trying to get it on a town fiscal year, which we're doing this year, so when it comes, it's going to be, so it's, because it's hard to, to max the country. Thank you, so that's it on that. Um, Chelsea, you know, you know a lot about this one.
I do, so, and Sarah came to speak with us about this within the last three or four months, I think. And, um, I think it was a good update, I think it's a great value. I think the, the residents, a lot of residents can benefit from it, so I'm, I'm very supportive of that.
This was, this was something that was discussed, um, during budget review several years ago. And, um, we all thought this was a great idea. This was actually something that was looked to be done in lieu of adding new employees at one time.
Yeah.
Um, and then we added this in. But, but this was, this was. Try to take, um, yeah, uh, try to take some items off of, uh, off of current employees' plate. And because it's very time-consuming, people call looking for services and try and point them in the right direction. And my understanding, this has been great, this was our value, and it too, and, and was going to help, um, to help with the funding. So, um, it's, it's, it's been beneficial.
Same question, is this a bridge to something that's going to be going into the budget where it potentially should be?
Are we talking about the mental health version forty-six thousand now, or it's still on the twenty-five?
So, I, I do think we should anticipate it's coming to the budget at some point. As long as the program itself is still like, it seemed to be worth the money, right? Okay, so you still have to keep estimate, right? Um, as long as that happens. Now, it may be by the time we get to the twenty-four, we still got lots of ways to pay for besides ARCA money. But what you may want to do then is say, okay, keep that money for later, because ARCA is going to run out, right? So, and you got to use it, so we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that when we get there, but at least we know that there is money there to pay for fiscal year twenty-four if we need to.
Sorry, my question was raised, and I moved down to the next one, sorry.
You'd move down?
I'm going to move. I'm going to move that the select board support utilizing ARCA funding for the FY twenty-four interfree, interface contract, second.
All in favor? Okay, now, the other two are, um, not quite as cut and dry. Um, so five thousand dollars that's being recommended by the ARCA ad hoc is for, uh, to give them the money to spend to do more outreach. Well, what does that mean? Um, so I actually caused her a day to give examples, and so she gave me very specific examples. They need a tablecloth, they need supplies to take back and forth things, so there's just a lot, a laundry list of things they like to have, but they don't have. So they would be, they would want to spend this sooner than later. So this is one that kind of is something that could be spent, twenty-five thousand bucks, so they could use this as soon as we're willing to give it, to use it. So this doesn't have to wait.
Can I just make a comment? So we, they went through that strategic plan process, probably about a year ago. And outreach was definitely the area of, um, concern for, for this. So, um, I think, you know, they, they've worked to try to do more outreach. Um, but it obviously, uh, it wasn't in their budget for FY twenty-two. So, um, I think they were kind of constrained on what they could, um, what they could do. That's a point. No question.
Andrew?
I'm okay with that.
So I move that the select board support utilizing ARCA funds for, um, outreach for youth and family services for mental health assistance, for five thousand dollars, so, second.
Okay, so will you let Sarah know that they, that money, and that they can start use that money?
Sure. I'll copy Carla on it, so she knows that it's coming.
Yeah, alright, next one is one they've talked about a lot too. Um, they need more help, help on the mental health side. Um, they, they want to work with a clinician, um, they've been talking about this for at least a year. Um, so I, I imagine that's in their plan too, Chelsea, although I haven't seen the kind of plan, I, I hear that this through the friends group. Yeah, um, so this is definitely something that's high on the list, and, um, obviously they submitted that to the ARCA committee and ARCA committee, um, agreed. So again, is this a bridge to a potential permanent position or we don't know at this point?
It's not supposed to.
No, so this is, this is not supposed to be a, um, you know, hire person, and then we got a new budget next year. This is supposed to be, you know, one time, um, bolstering what they can do, getting some help, getting some training, um, as far as it goes. You know, there's still, there's a lot of state money coming toward it, that's it. So who knows where we end up here, um, but, so no, this is not intended to basically end up in the budget.
And this is the one year? No, this is for two years.
Two years, okay.
So this is a contract service.
Yeah, so she, she actually called today and said, who called her and questioned? No, I guess Carla had some type of some nervousity about what's a, you know, contractor's employee. So I went over, you know, I, that I do a lot for them, so I went over all the rules with, um, Sarah. And I do think it's a contract, um, you know, it's going to be part-time versus some other things, so that's controlled their schedule. Um, so I think, I think it's a contract.
So my one concern about this is, are we actually going to be able to find a resource to do this?
That's right, and she's worried about that too.
Right.
All we, you know, we can buy the money, we can't, you know, this, what can you do to make sure, so she's concerned about the same thing, so. But she's got to have the money first. But no, she's concerned that, uh, it's, uh, a hard, um, position to fill.
So, on the dates of, so this is for FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. I mean, I'm assuming it's not going to happen in FY twenty-two, although we're good tonight. Um, but FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four, um, if they don't hire it, let's say, within the first six months of the, I just want to make sure we're not, like, are, are we okay with spending forty-six thousand in eighteen months? Or twelve months, if it's not until FY twenty, like, are we, are we setting parameters around this?
She said she thought December was the better timing, and I don't know if she's saying it, and say this really need time to figure out exactly how to structure this, and, but she thought that they're a few months away from truly being able to, uh, execute this.
There's some time to find people.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, so is this forty-six thousand assuming that it's not going to be a full two years? Or when, I'm just trying to understand this.
So I'm, I'm supporting this moving forward to start the process, judging your daily days on for.
Yeah.
Family, if, I would be happy with Chelsea just coming back and updating.
Okay, I agree, so I don't think we can go much further tonight.
Yeah.
You know, if we agree, we like the idea of supporting this, that they really need help, that this is a real big need. Uh, let's just do it, and then you can always find two, um, and get the number.
So basically, what we'll be doing is, is we're, we're serving this number.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, I mean, I, I definitely looked at that and, and, okay. But that's something that looks like it might become a permanent expense, and then maybe just takes us to have the discussion about this included in the budget, right? But here, I understand you're talking about, this basically would be something to be in the contracted services line, but it's split over two years.
Correct, yeah.
We're just going to get some more information to clarify.
It's been made clear, we're not looking to add a position. Um, you know, they, they, they had their, um, assistant added a couple of years ago. Um, they had a lot, if you look, you know, they had a lot added by the term, um, so no, we're not trying to add any.
I'm not even against adding positions, just going through, as we're about to begin, the whole budget cycle for FY twenty-three. That's really appropriate place to have discussion, advisory and select word about adding positions.
You know, and, and I agree with that, but I think that was the point of this, of the ARCA funds. This is technically lowering the tax rate and giving us the opportunity to see in a two-year period if it is really something. I think any year from now, we're going to have a better idea if it's something we should really be considering as we move forward.
And the need that was exacerbated by COVID, you know? So the constraint, the, you know, the department request for this type of service went up quite a bit.
So this is, this is something that does not overlap with schools.
No.
Schools have its own departments for, uh, mental health services, etc.
Okay, so I'm going to move that the select board support utilizing ARCA funds for youth and family services, mental health condition, for forty-six thousand dollars to be spread over two fiscal years, second.
All in favor? So the minute taken, just wanted to meet with how she's.
Yes.
Um, okay, um, next is the signage to denote the new Southwood Historic District. Um, I went back and looked, I assume, I mean, that's a very, um, specific number. So I assume they've got a quote, um, to do this, but without the signs actually designed, I'm not sure why it's so exact. But it is, um, this is one that, um, should go through capital, yeah, so we agree with that. Um, as far as coming back and saying, this is where it should apply, this is what we recommend, we like it, we got a good bidder, whatever. So we're not trying to design it tonight, we're not trying to say go, we're just saying we like the idea of spending ARCA money on signs to denote the new historic district.
And is this for one sign, or is it going to be?
Surely not.
Well, just one.
Okay, really, surely not, okay.
Yeah.
Twenty-six thousand, surely not.
Those aren't allowed. Those aren't allowed, that's a no-no, Sarah. So I'm, I'm supportive of, of leaving this, this on there and about to get through the process.
So make the motion, you know, subject to capital review.
Yeah, okay. So I moved that the select board, uh, support sending the ARPA request for the signage to denote the Southborough Historic District for twenty-six thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars. To a capital, sorry. Second.
On favor? On zero. Okay, next one is, um, what they labeled, um, needs-based economic relief. And they wanted this targeted toward individuals. And they got a lot, uh, I don't know what, they got several, um, responses surveyed that said, look, I am a tenant, um, I'm a winner, so therefore I didn't qualify for things that homeowners qualify. For example, the real estate tax relief that we talked about in the summer. So they said, what about renters? So we need help too. Uh, you know, there's real estate taxes built into our rent. So they didn't say just focus on renters, they said focus on individuals that, um, need some help, um, because of COVID, um, and, um, and left it up to us to decide how to distribute that relief if we think it's the right thing to do.
So, I'm supportive of that number, absolutely. I just think we need to work out the path, you know? As Chelsea spoke about the rent and mortgage program, it wasn't just homeowners that were able to get assistance for that.
So you ran this there.
So I, I, I think we need to explore this more, but I'm, I'm all fired up to support that number.
I think Lisa, um, and I don't know, I'm guessing that the people who said what they, what I just said, maybe we're focusing on the taxation relief committee for that, that is real estate taxes.
Sure.
Maybe it's, so Sam, I know you've got some strong feelings on it.
I, I support the number and I guess I support, uh, distributing it, uh, not hugely broadly, but across a number of organizations. My big thing is that I think we already have a number of organizations in town who are closely tied to folks who have these needs. So people like the taxation aid, uh, senior center, uh, or the health in some cases, you know, those people who, you know, struggle. Food pantry is another one I think that's very close to, you know, who needs aid of this type. So I think finding ways to get the money to those groups versus creating additional infrastructures to distribute makes a lot more sense to me. So, and I, I agree that, that money is the first question, how much? And then work to figure out how to feed.
And we don't have to do the whole thing. And we heard what, um, Liz said tonight, right? That's probably header in tonight because we knew we were going to talk about this, we thought it was relevant. But let me, um, and maybe tell you something else, you all know, but it's probably worth repeating as far as, um, what Sam said, kind of tie it together. So there is, um, an emergency fund.
Yep.
That is set up, um, that is basically controlled by the Friends of the Southboard Youth Commissioning, so the five-on-one C three, right? And the way a item comes out, I know Lisa, you did one last year, right?
A lunch home.
Yep, so the way that, way an item comes out of that, um, so there's a pot of money set up. And that's this bucket that's restricted for that. So, the director of the food bank, um, Pam, and possibly, and there may be two more people there that do it with Pam and then Sarah. They get together. There's a request that goes in, it could go to all three places, um, um. Doesn't matter where it goes, we go to food bank, it could go to Cedar Center, it could go to, to, to youth and family services. So they get together and they get in a request. It's a form, they, they ask a bunch of information. It gets filled out, they sit down and they basically vote as far as whether it qualifies to emergency fund. And then if it does, then they send the Friends, um, um, of the South East Commission an email saying, we have voted this, we appreciate you funding this. And the Friends then will, they then talk and say yes or no, um, as far as that goes. So that's how that process works. That's one way to do some of it. We understand how the taxation league committee for it, we talk about it, right? Uh, you know, what's going wrong with them is that infrastructure isn't front of the space. Do you have a chance to check off on your bill? That's where you can do it. I mean, you saw how paltry that money was just coming in now, it's like three hundred dollars a year.
Should we change that? So that you can check it off electronically and add it to your bill?
Well, okay, I don't know how you pay your bills, I pay my bills, so, you know, they'll pay, right? And I don't think, there's no chance to do it that way. And then you've always had, you know, escrow, escrow is never going to do it, so you always get that.
That'd be a better way. I think we need to focus on finding better ways to learn people. I think a lot of people don't like that.
I agree.
They knew about it. So we need to work to find a better solution.
Just off of something Sam said, so I think it sounds like there's a consensus up on that.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So then it's just that we'll have, what the details of this could be. So Sam, were you suggesting that in lieu of setting up a whole new infrastructure while we're treating this stuff? Instead, use an existing, just, just distribute.
We have the recommendation to do that today.
Okay, okay.
So just to give some perspective, I can only have my numbers on eight applications that we did for rent and mortgage. But I think we did twelve altogether. So it's forty-two thousand dollars that we have allocated. So I think, I think this would be a good question for the consultant to say, do you have anybody that's put a framework together for this kind of program? I just think that whatever we do, we just need to be consistent.
Yep.
And make sure that it follows an, an application process and review. I just, you know, I think if we were to break it up between the taxi, I don't have an issue with breaking it up between taxation and then an actual process to capture others. I just think that we can't, we just have to have a process. And I think if we can, if Jennifer seen, I mean, we could, we could just follow the rent and mortgage program. It was lengthy, um, and took a decent amount of time to review.
Because that's old, right?
It's over with, but that, but there was actual, like, it was based on income and the number of bedrooms that you had. And so there were certain criteria that then qualified you for a certain amount per month. And then we made the decision on what the cap was for the number of months that we would help them with.
But I think if you can, one point about the rent and mortgage allowed people to stay in the home. And I think that, that was a key point during COVID. And I think that came at a time, and I'm grateful that this board was supportive of that. Because we, we, we changed lives.
You're there.
You know, and that, that's what this should all be about. So I agree, I think I wouldn't even be adverse to upping that to seventy-five thousand and, and maybe working through three different groups to be able to, you know, find the best use of that money.
And I think the other thing that we just need to be cognizant of is that, and I think it was pretty, pretty clear with, was it Liz that spoke? At the beginning?
Yes.
That the money essentially gets allocated in that fiscal year. I think with the emergency fund, because we can't, we can't put this money into an account that then might not get spent, right? Like, even if it's sitting in the emergency fund? I don't, I think it would.
I think you can. We, we should check on this, but I actually think you can.
Okay.
If you go back, if you remember the first slide that Andrea did the night we did the presentation, it says, you can allocate money to not-for-profits, that's one of the things you can do. So once it's in there, I don't think.
Okay.
Control.
So I actually. Because it's not actually a town account.
That's right. I actually think you can.
Okay.
All right, let me just come in on the emergency fund once again, because I, I've worked very closely with, um, both Barbara, um, Sarah and Pam on this. And, and just so the public is aware of that, the good that can come out of this. Um, you know, everyone's aware, we've had a couple of fires in town and I'm going to use those specifically. I was able to show up on the scene of the fire within hours of it happening and give that family a gift card to be able to go and get the things that none of us think about in the face of tragedy. To go and get clothes that don't smell like smoke. Go to get a toothbrush or deodorant without having to stop and think about it. The emergency fund allowed and gave this family a gift of a little bit of, of a safety net and security and a chance to breathe to figure out what they needed. So I am a huge supporter of the emergency fund. I've seen the difference that it's made in people's lives. And I, again, I think that's one of the great benefits. And we're fortunate to have in this town for somebody that finds himself in need.
Well, I've written the checks for for over twenty years, like twenty-five years since two thousand and two, I reckon it's, or twenty years. And, um, plus the choice committee, correct?
Yeah.
It's, uh.
You know, to be able to show up within hours and, and, you know, again, I don't think I've ever waited more. Even on a Saturday morning at seven o'clock when I made the first call, by seven-thirty, seven-forty-five, I get a meeting. So, again, just, um, a great opportunity. But I just think.
I mean, I don't, I don't know that I'm ready to actually put a number to this. I think the concept, I, I don't know that we, we should.
Agree.
I mean, I don't, you know.
So you can make the motion, we agree that we should allocate some ARPA funds to.
Yeah.
Individual needs-based economic relief.
Right. And I almost don't want to cut it off. I mean, with cares, we did, we, we didn't spend all the money that we had allocated to use. So, um, I think we just need to make sure that whatever program we come up with makes sense for the, um, people that we're trying to agree help. And we need to make sure that people know about it.
And we can change this as we go along.
Right, so, okay. So I, I move that the select board support the usage of ARPA funds for a needs-based economic relief to be discussed.
Amount TBD.
Second.
On favor? Moving on. Um, okay, so now you may recall that there's two amounts that, um, the ARPA ad hoc has recommended related to trails. Um, inside separation, because the big one, the Peninsula Trail, that's still not, you know. Anyway, um, Peninsula Trail is, they have applied for a large grant. And they will hear yes or no for that really, really soon. So we'll then know, um, what to do with that one. So that's why I put that one below for not tonight, especially we need to get that answer first. However, um, Catherine McKee is very good. She, 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 she knows how to do things. So she said, and if we were to get that, we'd like you to keep the money there and fund crosswalks going across Route Thirty to get into it. So she, she still likes the money even if they get the, um, state grants. So I thought it was, um, yeah, well, she didn't, they don't know what the numbers are for the crossing, so she's, so, so that would be the term. But anyway, so, um, the twelve-five is for a lot of things that they could do now. Um, so that's why I separated. So the, the twelve-five is, um, pretty well laid out as far as stuff that they'd like to do. Um, you know, we've got a standing committee now as a community, um, to, to do it, she's got a pretty vibrant committee. So I thought that would probably be a good one to consider tonight. So I would be supportive, I assume this is another one at the twelve-five that would go to capital. So, uh. Well, it probably depends on what they want. Well, you know, some, I think if you look at the details, uh, maybe, um, but I don't think there's anything that's over ten thousand as far as the list goes. I'm not sure about that one. I can't remember, Jason brought that one up twenty-seven, you know, does he remember? Personally, you know, so. So I, I, so there, at least I think TBD as far as whether that's capital.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, based on the list, benches to popular businesses, I mean, I certainly, um, could be supportive of that. Are they looking to get this sooner rather than later, or do they have a timeframe?
Yes, he is looking to get that sooner. And it's relatively small.
Is she still here?
She's in.
Oh, yeah.
She's still here, good, so. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Jason says it's under the, but it's still a possibility. What if they?
It was completion of Peninsula Trail, other trail.
That one, sure, we agree. Which one?
Understand, I don't know a little bit.
So.
Is it other trail?
This is an O, you know, not one to discuss that.
This is a one of percent.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So Kathy has her hand raised.
Yeah.
Who does?
Yeah. Kathy, can we bring her over, Kathy? I'd just like to hear what she's looking to do. And I'd like to know if these are, when and a, and a firm cost. I mean, does she think the twelve-five is going to cover? Hi Catherine, are you here?
Hi, could you?
I know why you, do you mind Kathy if I just ask? Okay, sorry. Uh, Kathy, can I ask you a couple of quick questions on the trail enhancements?
Absolutely.
Um, is it first, is a twelve-five a hard cost for what you're looking to do?
It's an estimate based on a number of, um, things that we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, so can you just like take one minute and touch on some of the major things you're looking to accomplish with this? I know you sent a list, but I, it's, it's always better to hear it from you.
Of course, and, and not to complicate it, but I do have a quick spreadsheet if you want. Need to share screens while I'm talking for one minute. I think the visual will give you what you're looking for.
Sure.
It's disabled.
Oh, is that going to screw you up, Chelsea?
I mean.
Great. Let me know when you see an Excel spreadsheet that says preliminary budget. Everyone seeing this?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, great. So essentially what the twelve-five would, it's broken down here. So we're looking, um, to do, to have a shed, um, for our tools that we'd like to buy also with this money. Boardwalks, um, between four and six boardwalks, bridge, small wooden bridges, nothing fancy, one to three. Um, interpretive signage, just a few, I'm estimating three here. Single post pedestals, um, and installation costs. And then trail buildings, spelled wrong, but trail building consulting fees, that would be for the boardwalk and the bridge, um, and a contingency of fifteen. So that's how the twelve-six is broken out.
None of these is for like one specific site? It's going to be spread out over?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Shed. Shed. Where's that going?
So that's a TBD. I want to consult with DPW. Um, the committee's talked about it, needing a place to be able to house our tools currently, it's in my garage. Um, so it just depends, it depends on where there's an opportunity to put something like that. Would DPW allow something like that on their property? If not DPW, what are some other alternatives?
So she says that, you know, everybody brings around schools, and so this would, I'm not guaranteeing they're in schools. Um, I, I, I just think this is, uh, an easy one too, and this is not capital.
Right, and, and I spoke to Jason actually specifically about, um, capital because I understood the Peninsula project we had put forward is above the ten thousand threshold. So my understanding after speaking with him was unless he did, unless he wants to see this, and we'd be happy to consult with them if they want to see it, um, so that we're using funds properly. But, um, because it doesn't meet that ten thousand dollar threshold, um, unless you consider it collectively as one.
Sitting here on capital too, I just can't believe Jason is going, want to have a, um, say over, um, spades and trials and things like that. They've got plenty on their, their list that they've got to, to deal with, um, so.
I mean, I don't want to speak for Jason, I mean, he is in the audience. If we want to bring him over and if he has a different opinion, I'd be interested to hear it.
Well, he's hearing what I'm saying, so I would think if he disagrees, we're going to see his hand.
All right, Jason, if you disagree, just raise your hand.
Or he's dealing with my time, so. So Jason, sorry.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Um, so Catherine, Lisa, you want to ask the second question as far as she's ready to go? She, she can spend it tomorrow?
Yes, yeah, so I think she, she, she kind of addressed that, Kathy, I think she's.
Okay.
Looking to.
All right.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome, thank you. I don't know how.
She's buying the cooler and Jason.
Is he there?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, I, I, um, I know I'm not following instructions, but I think I just wanted to go on the record. These are clearly not capital items. The capital policy is ten thousand dollars for an individual item or a collection of related items that sum to greater than ten thousand dollars. So, um, this document.
That's not, that's not a collection.
Yep.
This document was not in the packet, right? There was a PD, uh, PowerPoint that was in the packet, which I think had the total number, right? So I think, I think we're all in agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. I was going to say that, but I didn't want to speak for Jason.
Anybody disagree on this one? Chelsea?
Nope.
I'm very excited.
Yeah.
Question?
Yep, so, oh, hold on, I'm going to start sharing, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Catherine.
Um, so I move that the select board support using ARPA funds for the Southborough Trail enhancements for up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
For immediate release. For immediate.
For immediate release.
Second. On favor? Catherine, you got twelve thousand five hundred.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll see you soon.
Yep, we want to hear about Peninsula Trail as soon as you hear.
You will be the first to hear.
Thank you. All right. Okay, um, now let's, we're gonna come back to North Pole Road when we talk about North Pole Road. So I just stuck it up there in case that's what we live doing, right? Because we do need to talk about it tonight, so it was, it was timed since then. Now let's go down to the next section, which has got the real big numbers in it.
So Kathy, before we move on from this, can I just bring up, I'm gonna give my pitch again for Chelsea.
Sure.
And the eighty-five hundred.
And it's gonna be, I talked to Dorian, so she's. I did talk to her. So Chelsea, um, on six fourteen.
Yeah.
You want to have, um, joints going to send a memo explaining why she needs eighty, why she wants eighty-five hundred dollars to pay with consultant to help with the.
For one year.
Yep.
Okay.
So it's not a.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So that, that, so six fourteen, which would be.
Thank you.
Okay, so you will. So we'll update the spreadsheet for that. Right now, let's go to the next section, which has the big numbers in it. Okay, so you've got Minnesota Trail, you've got the national grid property that Sam would love to see us buy. You've got a, um, you know, general amount of money for IT to fifty-eighty. You've got, the biggest number is sidewalks. Um, you've got the hazard case that's been recommended for police and fire. Um, you've got the um, kinda catch-all bucket where um, we can basically decide how to use it for things that would have um, basically been paid for by the tax levy. Um, to, to try to keep the tax levy down. So we've already used a chunk of that was five hundred. So we've already used a piece of that with the stuff above, right? Um, and then we've got the um, second year of the subsidy for the, for health director. And so I, I think that's the right number now, Chelsea. It was a little bit higher, but I think it's been adjusted to.
Yeah.
And then we've got the um, um, possible need to um, add on. Um, please let the single away, um, sixty-five hundred dollars to add to the vaccination staff.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there anything on that list anybody wants to actually talk in detail about tonight? Or, I mean, these are big things that we're gonna need a lot more information on.
There's, um, Kathy.
Yep.
This is kind of borderline of talking detail, but just an idea. So for the national grid property, right? This is something that you want, this would be money to acquire. Which would need to be approved by.
Yes.
So what about? I mean, if we wanted to use ARPA money for this.
Okay, hold that thought for a second. Are we right about this? Even if it's ARPA money, you still have to go through town meetings to acquire.
So, so if we're, if we had kind of a docket of all town meeting items, now this is one that require a lot of additional study. I can say raised a concern is the property contaminated.
Yep.
What's the?
Yeah.
How much should, should we pay for it? But this is something where, you know, Sam has spent a lot of time on this. This is something that potentially. I just wanna. Put that out there.
Yes.
And, and then because really there's no point in uh, our decision whether or not to spend the money a lot.
No, we've gotta get there. We've gotta get there too. It's kind of, it's a joint decision.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
How about, what about have the town meeting vote first? And that, and that if, if the town, if town meeting approved that, then boom, we have the funding source. You would basically effectively be allowing the town meeting to take this vote.
Are you? Well, I think you gotta say ARPA first because you gotta have a way to, by trying to get to the more, and they don't. So I think you gotta do.
Some, sometimes, you know, we vote to authorize using free cash for like, right? Okay, so this would basically be devoted to let us use ARPA funds to fund this purpose.
So we said ARPA, we like ARPA for it, and now do you guys wanna do it, you know?
So I have two comments on this. One, I think it's gotta go through capital, obviously.
Yes.
Two, I think that there's enough of a concern that we need to look at a twenty-one E. I, I am not comfortable going to town meeting with a property that I don't know is not gonna create a liability for the town in the future. And I completely understand Sam. There are things you can do to cover it as pavement, whatever. But I think I'm not comfortable going to town meeting and not having an answer as to what we're specifically buying. I know there's been talk of a stream. So I think there, there's some due diligence, Andrew, that goes in before I would be comfortable bringing it.
That I agree we have to have before we could say we will be able to use. In other words, we, we, to do this, we need to agree we should buy it. Um, and so we've gotta do all the due diligence and then you're gonna repeat it. And so tell me, they've got it then, say, yep.
Yep.
And we haven't fully investigated that yet.
Right, and there, there is a value in the property. I'm not saying that there's not. I just.
Do you think you need to like hire a consultant to investigate that or? Might be useful, but again, I think there may be some knowledge out there. With the, when the property is used to tell us what they know about it.
I, good intentions, Sam. I, I don't know if I would be comfortable with.
I'm not saying.
It doesn't hurt to ask. Agree. It's a starting point. Agree, agree. I just think there needs to be some more due diligence before I'd be comfortable.
Maybe a framework, a when, when this do, I mean, now we're heading into the summertime, okay? We're gonna, things will slow in the summertime. And it might not even necessarily be fall town meeting, but just the annual March discussion.
Yeah.
To get the process started so that, uh, because our taking a vote to do this really doesn't mean that.
And I would take it in front of Lisa. I wanna know if it's dirty or not, sure. But I also wanna know what we're gonna use it for. Um, and not just buy it just to hang out, um, and have it made there. So I'd like to know, and I'm fully, Sam, I know how hard it's working. So happy to listen to this. I'm an open-minded, but I just think we've got a lot of work to do in this one to get to where we're ready to say go.
So Mark, let me ask you a process question then. If there is a twenty-one E or some investigation done on the property, is that their responsibility before the town purchases that property? Is that a negotiating piece for us or is it our responsibility as a potential buyer of the property?
It could be a negotiating tool, um, but again, it gets back to Mr. Stager saying, well, we could ask them and see what they tell us. And if, you know, I, I, I think it should be the, you know, if it's a negotiating tool, that they are going to pay for this to be done. We pick, you know, we pick who does it. We have an LSP already on board for Breckner. You know, we could look to do something like that. The only thing I will offer since you opened the door.
That's okay.
Um, to, to Mr. Kennyton's comment, I really don't think that, that you can um, delegate your authority to assign ARPA to town meeting. So I think, okay, so I agree with. What's that?
And I don't want to, it's just.
No, 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 understood. So I'm just tying it back to, you know, the door that could open for process is that I think the board needs to put together a package to town meeting. That, you know, the town is, is the proposal here is we're gonna use, we refuse ARPA money for the funding of this. The town needs to support, you know, support the, the, the acquisition of property.
And I think too, and I'll just say this in a, a stop, but I think Sam has probably heard, depends who you ask in town. Some people will tell you, nothing has happened there and it's good, and then others will tell you a story. So.
And some people think there's something that's not out there. And I think it's worth investigating to figure out. Is it anecdotal? Or does somebody actually know? Done a study, et cetera. But I think it's useful to get serious about investigating this.
And if you knew, if you knew exactly what you were going to do with it and you knew we were gonna stay above ground.
Yeah.
And we were gonna pave over it and we were gonna, you know, there is some, you know, there, there's, okay, we could pursue something like that. But there's also been discussion of going sub-surface as well and, you know, um, with potentially hanging underground wastewater treatment or doing something along those lines. If there's any indication, if we're gonna be looking, that we're not quite sure what the use is gonna be to, you know, Ms. Hookett said, you know, we need to understand about this. Then I think we need to do all the due diligence we need to do and maybe answer those questions.
I mean Kathy, I would be comfortable with leaving this as our work in progress list, you know, and, and kind of going from there.
Yep, me too.
The one, two, three, four, first five are clearly capital, so to be clear. Next one's not. The next one could be, depends on what we spend it on, right, in the last two parts. So that's, you know, so the first five definitely will be going through capital before we. Okay.
So you don't feel any of those within this group are something that we need to act upon now?
I put this together and.
I'm just trying.
Anything so, but I, I'm one of five. So that's what I'm asking. Is there anything you wanna move on and consider tonight that's in that big group?
You know, I think that the web, website upgrades is something that, that's another thing. Anytime the town does a survey, it's some consistency that is. Better usability of the website, et cetera, et cetera. And I think our market, when was the last time we had like a major update? It's just like, I mean, it looks like the same basic structure.
Since I've been here.
Yeah, since I've been here too.
But I've heard conversation uh, in the MTC that there is a difference of opinion in terms of we actually need the investment there or simply learning better how to use what we.
There is that conversation.
So that's why I would be comfortable, Sam, leaving this number here. I'd like to hear from MTC. I would like to hear from Jay.
Yep, yeah.
And I don't know if this number.
Yeah. Have a follow me, discuss all things IT.
So I will mention, I will mention one thing with website. Um, in, uh, been talking with SPAC. They do have some money in their budget. They'd like to use it for training and understanding accessibility issues with website. Um, it's been difficult to try to get those answers from our website, from our, from our host provider. Um, but there is, um, there is a piece of software that layers over the top of the website in terms of accessibility, in terms of language, in terms of readability. Um, screen readers, things of that nature, and also um, being able to do a report on your website telling you where your deficiencies are and what you need to fix. Um, so um, S PAC would like to spend that money that they have in their budget um, to address accessibility issues. And um, I know that Mr. Montijo's been talking um, with MTC, also talked with the vendor, um, to try to get an understanding about this. So this may be something we can look at as an enhancement. Ms. Rogers talked about a bridge in various places tonight. So maybe this is something that will help to get us back a little bit closer to where they wanna be. And um, extend the lifespan, so to speak, of, of the website as we, as we know it, until we know what that next step is gonna be.
I think one thing that we, we may wanna add to this list too is the owls.
Yeah.
So we have. Yeah, so well, we purchased two from the IT budget um, for this year, which was one of the examples that we went probably into our sellers or consultant line.
I'm expecting a really big.
Yeah, well, this was how much? Three thousand. Okay.
But you can, you can. Owls will then, the two fifty to eighty.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're, we're ready to install in three different locations?
Oh, I guess I missed.
Wow.
So maybe we don't need anymore, but.
No, I, I think, I think we will be good because we can provide, again, the portability of them.
Yes.
Is extremely helpful as well. So we can have one that lives here, one that lives in public safety.
Yep.
One that lives at, at the community center.
Yep.
You know, I think that would, you know. That's the plan.
And maybe we consider a forge as far as. Being able to utilize it at.
The library, like a, like a. Yeah.
Yeah, we may wanna consider that, I mean, for.
The issue, the issue is still going to be from being back to person. We don't have enough space to accommodate everybody when they wanna accommodate.
Yeah.
It's, it's the physical space, not so much the recording pieces. And again, at some point, and I noticed it tonight when we're doing this discussion. Um, it was Bradshaw's talking and everything and that. If you look at the picture on the alley, you can just see the back of her. And she's doing this and everything and talking. So it, it's hard to, this is, you know, I've talked with Mr. Montijo. I think we're likely gonna go back to, you know, a large TV on some kind of a stand to bring in. So you can see, so the board isn't gonna be in convenience with turning this way. And we can have something where you can see people who are participating virtually.
Is that a kind way of saying I look like, doesn't it?
No, it's just that, you know, it's just, it's just that again, you're, you know, you're facing the screen. You have to look at the screen, but you're trying to talk. And the owl just knows where the voice is coming from.
That's great. So did you guys see the email I sent you that Jim forwarded to me? So it looks like we end up maybe. I only wait, I assume it's not title. End of twenty-three.
It is. That's what the Senate passed soon. So anyway.
That's gonna be a tight timeframe. If there's any hiccups along the way. So the House, so the House didn't put anything in, conference committee, governor, the governor vetoed. And then by the time it comes back and is reconsideration for closes this whole year. As long as it goes through without any issues, then I, I think, you know, I think it might get.
All right.
As for everything with the legislature, it's a time issue.
Okay, so are we happy with where we're gonna leave this now? Now, is this via a working spreadsheet?
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll keep. We have.
And we'll come back to it after. Discussion.
Yes, so we are gonna come back because we, you know, if we decide we wanna go forward with the call. We agree that's one more. Excuse me. We're gonna get to it. I promise you. Um, okay. Okay, so next one. Pretty cut and dry. Um, so Sam, you, you chiming here too. Um, so Sam especially. And I, Sam too, have been um, wanting to add a pavement management system, or at least consider it for, for a few years. Um, Sam's on advisory when we, we first started talking about it. So Sam's done a lot of work. He's called um, Scoutsmile Lexington in particular. And believes that there may truly, um, now we give you a system where you can see where you're gonna do roads and tell you how to do roads. Um, you got a nice um, um, report that shows it, that everybody can see. So when you wanna know what the new roads do, you can go look at it. But it could save some money too, um, because it tells you maybe, Karen, feel free to chime in here. Um, it may tell you how to do things in order that you wouldn't even thought how to do. So it gives you, you know, it's almost artificial intelligence like as far as how it does things. So all we're doing tonight is um, basically asking for the sub-award to support the investigation. This is not fine yet. We have decided. So capital is gonna do this. Investigation will come back to us as far as what the research is. Um, they've already started making some phone calls, but they're looking for us to basically support um, the actual um, work to investigate this.
Give it a good idea. It, it sounds like a good idea and just the timing of it sounds very well timed because of the, you know, new line put in the war instead of the. Line item for roads that capital would have a meeting that would talk about exactly which roads, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Looking into this is very good, right?
When you remember the citizen's petition that was concerned with managing the road process, right? Wanted, um, she wanted advisory to write a report and we convinced her they weren't gonna do a good write a report after the fact. You know, you have to write a report all day long, but it's gonna be after the fact. So um, we asked her to trust us that we were really gonna work on a process to truly try to improve the management of the roads in South Row. And this to me is a pretty good step toward that goal.
Any ballpark about how much money you were talking about for this?
Yeah, Sam.
Difficult to know for sure, but with the initial assessment process, I've seen estimates for like twenty to forty thousand dollars for this assessment. But the real issue, you have to do the assessment and then it, it tells you how to spend for the different levels of treatment to payment. And again, uh, it's budget independent. The model can tell you, if you've got four hundred thousand dollars to spend, here's how you should spend it. If you've got eight hundred thousand dollars to spend, here's how you should spend it. And here's what those expenditures will do to your overall load quality index of excellence and index from zero to. A terrible condition to perfect condition. And so basically Matt suggests how you spend this money to get the most value from it over a extended period of time. And there are always startup issues here in the sense that, uh, you know, you start with roads that are in a variety of conditions. Now there are some that need to be repaired totally at this point. And so it takes a few years to work into this process. With Lexington did a period of half a dozen years or so. And I talked to the city engineer there, who says they save money and it takes a lot of the debate out of the road. Budget process because it's an analytical tool that says, here's where you should spend your money and makes it more objective in some ways. And the public seems to uh, support that view. So again, worth investigating. It's been like very capital seems to. Again, Karen, this is one of the point on sphere here, so.
Yeah, I just wanna talk a little bit about it because I've been looking into this because this year was the first year where it came down to, well, what if we borrow five million dollars? And how do you wanna spend that? And when you get into it that way, it's difficult for one person to keep coming up with all the different scenarios based on what's going on.
Right.
However, before, when it's like, look, we have four hundred fifty thousand dollars, what are you gonna get? You've got two mon, two million, what are you gonna do? We only have sixty-seven miles of roads, not free of surgery. We can do it. We do let, roads that are bad, if they've already gone bad, just gone bad. You're trying to maintain the asset cheaper, right? Every seven years, you wanna be doing something. And we haven't had the money to really do that. So it's a great thing, but rather than look at it through ARPA. There is the compact grant. I've talked to Jay about this and we actually.
What do you mean?
Well, I, I don't know what, I guess you're not talking about ARPA anymore. I lost track of you guys a little bit, but. Rather than spend it, we can do, do it through the co, the compact IT grant, IT grant. And what we need to do when we do it is have to make sure it's on our ESRI um, program. That it also upgrades our GIS because that needs to be upgraded. Uh, and through the compact grant, you can do all that. I know.
Did we get the compact grant approved last time we asked for?
So we've never asked her for this. We did get it for Fiverr and you can only do it every other year, but we didn't do it last year. We did get it for Fiverr, and you can only do it every other year, but we didn't do it last year. So like I said, I talked to Jay, and he didn't have something else specifically that he was looking to get it for. So.
So that's great if we can fund it that way, but the point is we should do it regardless.
Well, I think, I think it's worth looking at and trying to get it that way because, and it's all. Yes, you can go and you can put it out to bid and you do a pre-call, right? And you have to do a qual, qualifications-based bid and all that. We have engineers though already who have the programs and can do it. But if you do it through compact, they'd only have to, you can use a mass DOT approved plan.
Okay, but we're not trying to do the details now. We're just saying we approve capital to investigate this.
Well, all right, can you approve it for them to investigate it as, as well as through the compact grant? So that, because to get the funding source makes sense. It, oh, it's a great idea, but then we miss our chance to go into the compact grant.
When is the, you know?
When is the next grant cycle?
It's this, it's, I think it comes up in October is the due date. So we need to get in early. And it's not that they, that they, I'm sure they're going to want to use. I mean, everyone would rather use a grant, assuming that you guys agree to it. But you, you need to agree to that they apply to the grants also.
I must focus on how we do it, I guess, opposed to, let's investigate it.
But everyone already thinks it's a good idea, so are we really investigating or just come back and say it's a good idea? Or are we looking at it and saying, let's get it, let's go and try to go forward with it?
The numbers and make sure, you know, if, if somebody says, look, if you've got less than a hundred miles of road, don't do it. So no, they've got to come back and say this way does make sense. There's apparently a company in Ohio that is maybe the leader in this. I know you think B, you know, BHB is, is worth looking at. But, you know, we've got to look at this and make sure it makes us any better and talk to towns and come back and say, yes, and they can get this done pretty fast.
And it does, whatever we have needs to be turnkey. And it has to stay turnkey because we only have one person in the department.
Karen, I'm sure that capital is going to talk to you about this.
Well, I, I agree, it's just, I think it needs to be stated in a, in a public meeting that we don't have the bandwidth or the people to maintain it and do it ourselves. And one, another reason why we haven't done it. But if you do it through a compact grant, it, it lasts up for several years of them keeping it up.
And these contractors do work through that. Northborough actually did this.
A lot of towns have it. It's, it's because a lot of towns are doing what you guys are thinking now and saying, hey, what if we gave more into the roads? It's never been a question before. It's never been, hey, what if we gave more? It's been, you got four hundred.
That's more or less.
He's going to tell you what I can do for that money.
That's true, I'd like to disagree with that. I've been working, you know, on the road start for twenty years. I thought that you had, had made it clear that you could only do so much road work in a year. And so we tried to back into your number. So maybe we misunderstood to you. We've done a lot of spreadsheets as far as trying to get what we thought you needed. I never understood that if you had ten million dollars, you could do ten million dollars of work. That was not made clear. So now we've got a big backlog of work that's done, which is why we're talking about local bond, so that we really can't get caught up. We know that the downtown work can't realize about money for a while. We expected that, that's fine. But now we've got to get caught up. We've got a lot of people who are saying, look at my road, and it's right. You know, I've seen the lists that you've put together, the sparkle needs to be done. You've got some numbers on some, you've got some big projects with no numbers, and you could add that up and get a pretty big number. So we just don't want to, we just don't think we can chip away at this like we used to. And this program would help really put this together, so.
It would help, absolutely. It's just, it still comes down to, and there's a lot of needs in the town, and there always have been. And roads aren't going to be, they don't stay great for long. Every seven years, you want to do something. And the road, the thorough streets are old car paths, right? That were, that were paved, they don't have a good base, they don't have all that. That's why they cost more, whereas the subdivision roads, they have less to travel on them, and you, you don't have to touch them as much. So everyone drives on the big road, on, on the thorough streets. Everyone, they have the most problems because they've got the worst base, and that's what everyone sees. But if you really go and you look at the subdivision road, most of them are fine, right? So that's, that's part of the problem. Everyone thinks that all the roads are bad, that the thorough streets are all bad, and they need a lot more work. And yeah, this program would be great for that to say, all right, if you're willing to invest two million into a road or, you know, whatever, seven hundred in one road, great. Because they need drainage to make the roads work. And that's really where, where we stand is everything is now really more of a project than a maintenance. And I believe you can work those programs to be project-based, not just maintenance.
Right, yes, you can.
Because we need, we need projects on our roads. We've only ever done maintenance. And that's what the huge difference in why we have problems on these thorough streets. But the plant, the plant board roads, ones that have been built, they all have drainage. They, they're appropriately built, so it's, it's a different process. But that's why I just want to say the compact grant makes a big difference.
Yep. So the motion is to basically ask capital to investigate the software that would allow to us to have a road maintenance program.
Can we put the caveat on there, though, that we would try, ask capital to do it in the timeframe of the compact grant?
Okay. In time to basically apply for the compact grant for this fall.
And investigate the, uh, this opportunity with the compact grant? Are there things about that that would somehow make it less attractive for us in terms of the how? I think this is an important aspect too.
So capital will do that too, and I can look at the grant, and it should make sense, okay? We should be able to talk.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure you weren't limiting us to the community compact grant because I think this, the idea with bringing this forward is we've been tasked in this fiscal year to bring a plan forward in community compact. You know, if you have a October timeframe, it's going to take months for them to review it. Then we're not going to have results, and then we may wait for nothing. I know that happened with the servers last year. And I imagine with all of Mr. Montijo's needs, we shouldn't hold him up from potentially applying for something else. So I, I, while we should all consider it, I don't think limiting factor, but it sounds like the motion will accomplish that.
And so why don't we talk to Jay and see if he's got anything else on his list that would be a better idea for the grant? Ask capital to go forward with investigation and don't necessarily let investigation hinge on this grant. Let's just get this done as fast as we can the right way. And if the grant works out, the grant works out. If it doesn't, you know, we're talking fifty thousand dollars, we're not talking. How's that sound, Jason?
It works.
Okay, enough on this one? Sam, are we happy?
We made a motion, but I don't.
Okay, so we've got the motion?
Yes.
And we got a second?
Second.
Okay.
I thought you made the motion, so I'll second. No, I thought Kathy made the motion.
We haven't voted.
And then I add Kathy up to.
It's good, like, you have not voted that much, I'm sure. So much is a little fuzzy.
Why don't you make a motion?
You want me to make a motion? I move, I move that the select board support capital planning committee to investigate the pavement road, sorry, pavement management system to be acquired during FY twenty-three and to pursue grants as of. So, four zero.
He's over, he's over there, he's at the door.
Five zero. Okay. Okay, next, finally, the Northborough Road Culvert. So to, to provide some background and remember it, tell me that this issue took more time than any other issue on the whole warrant. We spent, I think, hour and a half on this until it was done. It was surprising, we didn't expect that. We had decided to remove it because the bid came in much higher than what we thought. That was always, sometimes we talk about, so we'll take that differently. Tell me to disagree with that approach fairly conveniently and seem to want to get this road fixed once and for all. It's been this way for many years.
It's what, the Culvert?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's been.
How long?
It was two thousand fifteen, two thousand fifteen, I believe.
I was seven, you said seven, I think you said eighty-seven, so, okay. Okay, so seven years. So everybody knows about the Culvert, probably are driven, I was seeing, seeing the, what it is, right? So, um, the first discussion is, does the select board now want to get this Culvert fixed?
Yes.
Yes.
If I know that one. Okay, so Chelsea?
I'm a yes, just because I think it's too risky to go back up to that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, but then, well, so the first was, do you want to get it fixed?
I mean, I think it was pretty clear to tell me that people want it fixed. I agree, totally not what I expected.
Need to.
So, you know, I know, you know, two hundred people out of ten thousand is, I mean. They were, and so I think we need to, to do it, not what I was expecting, but.
Okay, all right, so we've agreed if we want to do it, right? We do it, so we got a bid, capital has vetted the bid. Let's get your numbers out. That was short eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars is the bottom line. So, you know, Paul Sumino decided that we wouldn't allow the article to be increased. I mean, thought it was too much, right? So the, the town, we decided we'll at least keep what you got there, right? So the thirty-eight thousand dollars stayed, so we got that approved.
Seven thousand dollars, Arthur's state grant.
Okay, so I know, it's eighty-four thousand, I've done the math. So if you look at the low bid, which is one hundred ninety-four, I believe.
One ninety-two, five hundred.
One ninety-two, five, then you take off the seventy from the state Arthur grant, take off the thirty-eight from the article. We've got eighty-four, five that we need to figure out how to fund. So what are our choices? We could use Arthur completely, which is why I stuck it up there. Could use Arthur partially and road funds partially. Other than that, I don't have a choice. I don't know what else choices we have. So anybody else have a way to do it?
Capital talked about roads and two different road funds in ARPA.
Well, there's not really. So this road funds, right? It comes from state, and we've got our warrant, so it's still.
Chapter ninety and.
Yeah. But it's, it's our road funds that are, so I'm not sure it matters where it comes out of as far as.
We're talking about FY twenty-two?
Well, the money is there. Remember, the road money accumulates, you know, you don't get close out. So there's enough money there, and Karen said, here, listen to this, and Chelsea will tell us that we don't have. So we know there's about a million and a half dollars of road money going into seven-one-twenty-two, right? And year we got to finish. So that's what we think our starting point is right now as far as total road money between chapter ninety and the warrant money that's accumulated. So there's money there to do this. Now, we also know we're behind these road projects, so as far as I'm concerned, every penny of the road money should go toward other roads and use. So I'm voting for ARPA to be used for this completely. I don't know what you guys think, I really think, knock it out with ARPA.
I'm in favor of using ARPA, but just because, Mark, I think back to when this thing came up and we put in for the state money, and then our time work was get it before the flakes start falling. That was last summer, I mean, last, last winter. So I'm just impatient to just get it done.
Yeah. And apparently the contractor's ready to go, Karen, is that true? He's kind of talking a bit to get us to say yes or no?
I haven't talked to them very recently. I think they, they wanted to do it last time I did, so yes, but.
Would, would we need to separately have something on the agenda about to accept the bid, or?
No, you've got a discussion award tonight under United, the board may vote on. So.
Okay, so we're going to.
You have a vehicle tonight to move this forward in terms of funding and process. And, you know, we've got a bid that's getting stale.
So, yeah, so the, the, the action would take would be we would move to accept the low bidder for the more, more of this project and to use eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars, town, Arthur money, to make up the funding gap.
It sounds like a motion.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. All right, so that's a question. Mr. Reed?
Next. May, may propose that the, in, in amount of contingency also be added to that amount that Ms. Gallinian views as reasonable, typically in construction, ten to twenty percent contingency. And, and the reason I bring that up is to avoid having to fund any shortfalls as a result of having to cover contingency where in the project. Is there the ability to also have that contingency covered under our funds?
Yes, answer to that last question. Karen, do we need a?
I would never say no to contingency money.
Well, what do you want us to do? So eighty-four five is what you need?
Yeah, it awards the bid, and then maybe you went up to another five percent.
So this work's going to be done this summer, right? While the water level's low.
Yes.
So I think it would be prudent for us to not spend every penny of ARPA until we see some of these things flush through. So, I mean, I think we can always, I would rather just do it for the bid and then come back if needed. So this is approved, eighty-four five.
Still more ARPA money.
Yeah, so we can always, so don't worry, it will not, not be done because of not having.
But thank you for the thought and the suggestion.
My sense of, it's just merely pointing out that moving, making funds from that's been allocated for road improvements and so forth, that's sorely needed. And we'll be talking with the R funds.
Okay, so we, I think we've got a cover.
Can I ask Karen a question?
Yes.
Karen, am I reading the bid documents properly? The, the, the low bidder actually had a substantially higher price in there for the box culvert concrete form than another bidder who had like forty-five thousand dollars cheaper box culvert here. Do we know why that is? Strange.
No, I don't know anything laid out in that email that.
Maybe we suggest, suggest the low bidder check would be higher there, find out who is suppliers.
It is amazing how very.
Yes, but it's, but it's interesting. Yeah, it, it depends. You'll see some, some, some bidders will put the money in certain places and some in others. And, you know, the other thing too, and I think Ms. Malonoski had said this, I'll put this back up a bit. If we had one or two bids, I'm not sure that that's, you know, it shows you what you've actually got out there. We had twenty people, you know, full plans for this and five actions in the day, so.
I, I know we can't cherry pick, I'm just curious if there is a reason for that. But let's keep moving.
Yeah, but they're always, I mean, whether it's a vehicle or. It's all.
Okay, so the motion is to award the low bid to Kinneffick Corporation for a hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars and to fund eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars of that low bid.
So.
Second. On favor? All right.
Four, four answers with all the work on the motion. No, you did, no, you did, no. Just busted out. He did the original motion, he got it all set for his body, and then moved it over.
I'm trying to move.
It's just a joke.
Before you leave the topic, I just, I guess, just one query about the schedule that is of interest to, interest to me. That's also what stands behind.
Do you live in the area?
Yes, ma'am, I actually.
I'm sorry, can we just do, name an address? If you don't mind, we're at the table.
Sure.
I just, the people at home can't hear it. I mean, I'm assuming they can't.
So my name is John Reed, and I reside at thirty-four Bigelow Road, which is in the northwest corner or portion of, of Southborough. That's often not recognized as being a part of Southborough. And I've actually learned through some of the, the mapping research and so forth that it was four ninety-five that changed that arrangement in that area. And, and that was just appreciating in the, the research of trying to understand how that culvert came to be. I originally was thought, I originally thought that it was installed by a farmer for, simply for the purpose of providing field drainage, which is, which is a typical improvement to make in that type of, that type of farm and field. Since then, I, I, I think I've come to the conclusion that that is actually a perennial stream that has flowed for many years from what is, I'm going to forget the name now, but it's the, the swamp that is behind many of the. uh, uh, many of the residents on Bigelow Road. And we've lived there for six or seven years, and many of the residents had indicated to me that that was a result of the, the, of a, of a beaver dam. Uh, since doing that research, I, I beg to differ, it actually shows based on some of the historical maps from the USGS, uh, that swamp has been, uh, in existence long before, uh, the arrival of any of the, any of the beavers. Uh. So with, uh, bearing that in mind, I, I do, I did express an interest in, uh, learning more about this project and being involved from uh, the petition aspect or potentially, uh, drafting a, a warrant article, as I mentioned to, uh, Mr. Denigan. And part, part of that is driven by the fact that when you look at these capital projects that have, uh, now have, uh, this one particularly has a, uh, a life of at least seven years, that it gets to the point where, uh, I believe it's in everybody's best interest to, uh, to finish that sort of, uh, capital project. Uh, two, two main points I'll, I'll bring up that I think, uh, help support the project. The first one being, uh, when you look at the actual, uh, road infrastructure, I would, uh, make the, uh, argument or, or, or hold, and I do hold the opinion that that is actually an important road, particularly because of, uh, four ninety-five being, um, being constructed and actually, uh, uh, dividing what was previously the old, uh, I believe, and some of you might know the history better than I do, but it was actually, um, uh, Main Street actually ran through that road that is south of, uh, what is now, uh, uh, Main Street and was, uh, separated by the, by four ninety-five. And there was also another road that ran aboard Avenue and then connect, appears to have connected to, uh, this Northborough Road that we're talking about. Uh. But just looking at, at, at its value, there, there's the two points, and the, the first one is that, um, if that bridge, uh, that is, uh, presumably owned and maintained by the, by the, by Mass D O T, uh, were to, uh, need to be repaired or replaced, it actually, uh, can create, excuse me, quite an inconvenience for, uh, not only the, uh, the travelers of that road, but the, the commerce and, and the like associated, uh, that relies on, uh, that artery to bring, um, uh, to bring goods and, and, and persons from east to west or west to east. Uh, so by, by, by fixing that road, it ensures that there's a, there's a redundant route, uh, and that is accomplished along this, um, this road that's been closed for quite some time. And, uh, besides that, the other, uh, the other example that I'll use in this, and I've actually been a bit surprised that it hasn't been, there hasn't been more of a, uh, uh, a local support from, uh, from public safety in that, um, there are a number of, uh, residents that live, there's not just, it, during the town meeting, one thing that I took exception to was a mention of there's, there's one person that is inconvenienced by, uh, this detour, I would, uh, beg to differ. And, uh, I'd encourage all of you when you travel, uh, to along Northborough Road and, uh, pay particular attention to the, uh, to the young family that moved in there. And every time I drive by that house, I look at those two kids, and that's what upsets me the most is, uh, the appreciation that if you have an opportunity to finish this project and give a more direct route to those two kids, that is worth every, every penny. So I just, I bring that up, you know, that's the, I think the human, the human element gets lost in some of these, uh, cost propositions. And, um, I'm just gonna close by saying, uh, please take the time to drive by that house, and when you see those two children and you recognize it will, it will reduce that, that travel time for that police officer or that fire, that fu, the fire personnel who are traveling to that house to help out those children, it is worth every, every penny. So, thank you.
And we, we agree, actually, so you're appreciated in the flyer here.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for hanging with us so late. Um, okay, um. Um, next one is the discussion of the Saint Mark's Street Project Park, et cetera, next up. Um. So, we heard from town meeting, right? So I've got to decide, uh, tonight, um, what we think the, I think the Bible path is to go for. We know that Saint Mark's School has engaged a firm to do an archaeological study as far as what's buried on their land. Um, it's my understanding that that study is going to be done in six to eight weeks.
Well, just when you say on their land, I believe it's on the, the park, the area on the plans that show of those parks, not the area that's to the north of where the.
Correct.
Okay, is that clarification?
So I agree, I agree with that. Um, but the study sounds like it's gonna go, um, if, if goes as planned fairly quickly, it's not a year, it's not six months. Um, anything you, or you do that would disagree with that? Um. So, all I can do is go something out and then you guys respond to it, and we gotta start something, it's right, as far as coming up with, with. So one way to approach this, to try to basically draw more people in this process, satisfy more people, end up with a really nice park. I mean, I think with all vision, a really nice park there if we continue doing this, right? Yeah, I've got, my mind, but, but, but. Um, is to basically stop work at this point and continue to start work, wait till the study is done. And then, from that study, at least decide then what to do, uh, with that piece, right? So if you break it in two parts, so you got the park, this one's from the park piece. Um, and then separate decide whether we want to go forward with the work from the road north, right? Which is not impacted by this study, in which no one has expressed concern that there might be, um, something that is precious buried there.
Well, just to remember to clarify there, you say from the road, or you're really just talking about the completion of the road where the, there's gravel drainage put in for the road, the, the park north of the road is really not our concern.
When you say our concern.
The town's concern.
Uh, but we gotta get the, yeah, so the road's not finished, right? Okay, so I'm talking about what we're supposed to do from that road north, when we're still supposed to, to, to at least do work with the, um, new partner lot for Saint Mark's, well, that's the great, right? We're not gonna pay it, but we guys still do work there, so we've got some work to be done north of there, including finishing the road. So, do we want to stop the whole thing for now, till we get the report? And then make a decision as to what we think should be done, um, depending on what that report says? Um. So the park stops, do we want to expand the, uh, charge of the working group that Andrew's part of? So that they basically come back to us with an, an expanded proposal with park that possibly, if your group agrees, incorporates the, the street walk? Um, that satisfies open space, satisfies historic, satisfies the library, um, big, big charge to do all that, right? But I don't think it's impossible, come back and that gives you time to do that, um, while the study's going on, I mean, that's one way to do this. And then, uh, either keep going and finish up the road, the new road, um, and everything else we've been, we have to do north of there, or stop the whole thing until we get the support back.
Or do we need to stop the roadwork at this point, and we continue the roadwork? Digging what's going on, just in that particular area.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so do you stop the whole thing, or do you keep the roadwork going that has nothing to do with the, the survey that's being done? So, that's, that's, I'm stalling out there, and then, um, so, Adrian, since you're so involved in the park piece, why don't you start as far as what you think, um, would be the perfect path forward?
Okay, I'm just throwing this, this out here about, you know, what's, what's most sensible, right? So. And if you walk that land, you can really see like the, um, those road, a lot of work is already been done, and it doesn't seem, I, I have a concern that if, if we are to just stop the work on the road that we, does this need to get? Do we lose the value of the current contract that we have? Do you, um? Do we lose the value of the work that's already done in terms of putting in the permanent drainage improvements which are encased in concrete? And the whole road is already been laid out, so. I, just to throw out there is, if we continue to do the work to complete the road, then, um, the work for the design of the park, um, we have the current, the current bid is based off of the June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one plans, right, and that's what's in our, our packet. Um, one thing where there's been, you know, mission creep from the, the working group, and again, that's something that I previewed three, four meetings ago, it's just, I would say, most members of worker feel that there could be some modifications to the design, that are all under this umbrella of, we, we think we can come up with a, uh, a, a design that checks a lot of boxes and that incorporates the history law concept, retain some of the, 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 uh, open space, um, contributions and focus on, you know, the, the native species, plants, and also, um, cause the parcel is unique, it's adjunct to the library. Uh, you know, Margery, who's our chair, and she is on the library board trustees, I think that she's the chair, right? Has ideas about placement of things that can, you know, use that space in a way that enhances the library. So, um, one thing we haven't really flushed out though exactly is, what will be the cost of making some of the changes to the plans? Now, I know that we have a, a contractor that we work with for that may be flexible in terms of working with us to try to make some modifications to those plans to see how much it would cost, but we haven't really, I don't think formally explored that. So there's a, you know, a bunch of different things to, to talk about, like, um, or consider. You know, another thing I don't think we should lose sight of is, the town meeting vote that was on the floor was, um, proposal for a small of usements, and I think there's just, the difference between that and a land swap, right? This is, um, in ways it's kind of a little form, form over substance, right? Because of the local arrangements, um, the town is getting basically like a, a permanent interest in the land, right? But there's, I think there's benefits to a land swap in lieu of the swap of usements that I think that, you know, you first saw the people that have, had the most vocal concerns about this project, one of the things that's set us noting the absence of an agreement to try to work towards a small of land. Now, I know that that's something legally that they, they take more time, but then, you know, if the ultimate goal is that that triangular parcel's gonna have a park, it's gonna be the town land, I think it's something to strive for, and I would be talent, right? And then the lines of demarcation are clear, that, you know, the town has the responsibility to maintain that property and ensure that property, et cetera, et cetera. And the, for our agents, there's still kind of murky questions about whose responsibility this is to maintain that, et cetera, et cetera. So those are some thoughts.
I guess I like the prospect of actually finishing the road and drainage work and continuing to look at how we might deal with the park concept. I like the concept of expanding the committee a little bit and expanding the chart in the committee. I think I listened to it on the last several, uh, working group committee, I think they've made some good progress, have some good ideas that are worth pursuing there, and it seems to me that, uh, there's, uh, a good possibility that, given the various inputs that we've gotten so far, that we could have actually meet the needs of the, of most of the, of the participants in the process in a way that most, uh, can include it, uh, more expansively than, than now. So, that's sort of where I'm leaning.
So, Andrew, when you talk about, and Sammy, you talk about expanding, I am very supportive of expanding the group. In what direction and, and what are you looking for as far as expanding? I mean, obviously, open space, we've discussed native plants, and I think it's important for them to have a seat at the table as far as that.
Yes.
I mean, what, what is your thought process and what you would look to, um, expand the group? In what direction are you looking specifically?
Okay, well, Margaret, I see Margaret, that's. She might be. It's a question of two, but, I mean, specifically, um, I know Freddie is one of the attorneys, and I know a concern that she's had, and I think that this is a valid service. In December, we had a, a public meeting where we said, here's the charge, and it was pretty narrow, right? It was to fill the circular, fill the circular space, and now it's gone off into, and that assumed the other design elements, including the open space, was gonna be fixed, okay? I still want to have the, uh, you can envision the, the, the plan, so that's having a lot of plantings and native species, et cetera, so I don't really have a great answer yet, is it, you know, there's currently seven, it's a, the charge of seven, there's six, only six appointed.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and the last couple of meetings, you know, about regular attendance, five, is that pointing a couple more people, is it having, um, dedicated slots of different boards? Cause that's something that we talked about.
Yeah.
The first generation of it.
Yeah.
And I think it was just a close vote, and we decided to go with, you know, the tall, at-large concept.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the three key constituent groups, I think of are open space, historical commission, library, then also Bill Science from the ADA.
Yeah, but I think it's very important.
He's been excellent, not just, he's not just focusing narrowly on the ADA, he's a, a facilitator.
Yeah.
Control anything very creatively about ways to. And again, the thing that I keep thinking of that's exciting about the space is just its proximity to the whole, I'm thinking about the charge for tricentennial, uh, two thousand and seventy-seven, project seems to be moving pretty slowly, but still, the modest goal, I, I kind of foresee is that by the tricentennial of two thousand twenty-seven, if this is, uh, a town park that celebrates parts of the town's history that haven't been recognized before, I think that's something that a lot of people can get behind. And just to Sam's point, if, if, if we say, complete the work on the road now, and then there'll be some tweaks to the, um, plan to try to get a little more consensus on the park, I think that the park work is less expensive than the road, but again, this is just fine.
Okay.
At least I've kind of been historical, it's actually weighed in very constructively during the committee meetings, as a matter of fact.
I, I, I agree, Sam, I just, I'm curious of the makeup, I think it's important to, if, if it's going to be expanded and it's gonna encompass potentially a redesign of the park, I mean, some of the key things for me, that from day one has been handicap accessibility or mobility challenged people to have a place to go in town, which we know doesn't happen, even our fields aren't that way. So, for me, that's the one thing that I would ask, whatever the makeup of the committee is, is that we make sure that everyone has a place to go that can access it, and, um, you know, the education piece as well. I think, um, as far as any, um, memorial, I think that it's very key that the lit monks are involved in any discussion on that. I know I've heard from the chairperson from the lit monks, and they're interested in being, being involved in that piece. Um, I think as far as the road goes, I'm supportive of going forward, except if we're gonna talk about a land swap, and that's the, the, how we're gonna move forward with this, I would rather have that in place before another penny is spent on the road itself.
And that's the other way to do it, is wait and have that discussion.
Um, so, ag- again, if that's, if that's the, the direction the board is looking to go, then I would rather have that conversation first. And if, if that is the intent of this board, and if Saint Mark's cannot reach that same conclusion with us, now we've put a lot more money into something that we may have to backpedal on a bit.
Well, that, I'm glad you raised that point, because, you know, the, the real concern under the existing interim licensing agreement, it does have the, it's relevant.
Right.
Three, it seems very hard to foresee a scenario where um, one side or the other would pull the plug, but you really have to confront the question of, should you spend this money? One side or the other would pull the plug, but you really have to confront the question of, should you spend this money? Knowing that that is a theoretical risk, right, so that's.
Great, so, um, so that's, I guess, kind of where, where I stand, I'm certainly open to looking, you know, at the park and, and. You know, what the best use of that space is, I'd be interested to see an updated chart with who. Who the board thinks we should add to that position, and, and again, I'd be interested in. If the board is supportive of having the conversation on a land swap, doing that sooner rather than later. A few points off the top of my head.
Um, I am in favor of holding anything related to the park until the archaeological dig is done. I think my concern with holding out on the road is that. It's part of the current bid, and I just don't know the ramifications of holding out on that, I think. Um, to leave it how it looks today is not great. So I, you know, I, I understand the concerns around it, but I just. I just am not sure if leaving it is really what we should do.
So, there's not a lot, there's, there's a lot of consensus here, um, as far as what we could do going forward. The difference appears to be whether we go forward with the road piece now, or. Entertain the land swap first, then. And you, you can do that entertaining period quickly, I think, you know? Um, so Chelsea, I, I, I asked about the contract too, and Karen. Has said, and Mark has said, that the contractor is very flexible, whatever that means, which is not a word I'm used to hearing with contractor. But that's what I've been told, that, you know, we would, we could do change orders. We could actually terminate the contract as long as we pay for everything that's been done and do something different, you know, maybe just do Main Street separately. You know, take out flag and deer foot, given, we're a long way from doing that one right now, right? And just end up with a contract for finishing Main Street. And then go back to and do another contract with them if, when we decide what we need to do.
So I think the challenge with that is, we went up to bed on three nights. So I just fear that we're going to be in a North River Road situation where we have this eyesore. Downtown, and now it's going to cost us four times as much to fix the park, so I, I get what you're saying, I just don't know that's the best. Decision for the town, I, that's what I'm. I mean, it's an option, I, I just don't know that.
I'll throw one more. Little wrench in, I guess. I think. Conversations with planning board is they would also like some additional clarity from council, kind of on the same issue we talked about before. At what point does planning board get brought in? And I know it's got to do with, with procurement and, and I think it's thirty. Thirty eight mark or something, but, but I think planning board, it would benefit us all to move forward if we're all on the same page and we understand. At what point, as we go forward, planning board should be brought into the process, and I, I don't think there's complete clarity on that. I would just ask that as we move forward that we get the clarity on that as well.
So there's, yeah, Marguerite's got her hand up.
Yeah.
But just to Chelsea, to your point about, you know, I have that same concern, right, about, okay, any delay on the road work, and I, I really. This is, this is kind of a, a close call, but because ultimately to get. If a reoriented St. Mark's street, to get it accepted as a public way. Next town meeting. That's right, so I think that the idea of working towards a land swap, and I agree with Lisa, that if you want to do that. As inject a bill, now is the time to do it, and I agree, probably could, I mean, happen relatively quickly, the difference between the swap of usements and a. Land swap is not, I don't think that much different is.
I agree with you in substance.
It is more, it shows some more better response to this, to some of the feedback that we got at the town meeting, and again. Part of, I think, the real negative reaction to this at the time meeting was also because. That we didn't make, point out some of the good parts of this project, right, so the. And I think that if we can come forward with a land swap proposal, that's something that is, you know, it's a more favorable. Deal from town, but just one caveat is that the portion of land that would be given or traded to St. Mark's is. The end of what is currently a, a public way, right, St. Mark's, so that would also need to be submitted to have a vote to abandon the road. There's a couple different things, that should also be, I think, part of the goal, if we're having a new deal. That just make them clear that we, the town can't give up that land until there's a vote from town meeting to formally abandon. St. Mark's. The, that portion of St. Mark's street.
But the, there was, to me, two big pockets of criticism, one was. Not doing the history walk, when the grant said, that's one, right? And then the other one was that we were. Basically spending town road money, chapter ninety money on land that we didn't know, it was a pretty simple bargain, right, as far as what the, the, the. Protest was, so if you, if we could negotiate the land swap, right? We understand that we've got, all this other stuff has to be done to really pull it off, right, but if you can get the deal done. Then the group that had the issue with using chapter ninety money on, on non-owned land. Should be happy with that deal.
Okay, but here's the, the next question coming down the pipe then, is if there's a. A deal where there's an agreement to. Swap lands, and that's subject to a later town meeting approval, but it's clearly fiscally better just to complete it. Calendar year two thousand and twenty-two, I think that the, I mean, the, the contract doesn't, there says completion date, and it's black. But I mean, at least some of the documents I've seen of, you know, there's like a completion date built in, like November of two thousand twenty-two. That's the next question coming down, just to give some consideration to, right?
It doesn't conclude exploring as quickly.
Yes, you go, show that with the next step.
Hey, we could explore real quickly, right, and then come back real quick and. Meet again, because that would inform maybe what we do.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you want to go to the.
Yeah, well, there's three, it ends up for quite a while.
So I think, but Marguerite was first, I think.
She was, yeah, Marguerite, you should be able to talk.
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, okay, a, a couple, and thank you for this discussion. It's been, it's been wonderful to feel that you are open to a lot of. In my opinion, wonderful options on this, and the group has been wonderful to work with, the, uh, first thing I'd say is that the other. Stakeholder in this, in addition to open space and historical and the library and ADA, is St. Mark's. And we've been very happy to have Dan Blanchard, who's the historian for St. Mark's, and. Um, one St. Mark's student, who, who have been incredibly helpful in this discussion. The, the first thing I think that you might remember in negotiations with St. Mark's about a land swap is that the current library parking lot. Uh, was given to the library, to the town in a land swap with St. Mark's. In the nineteen eighties, I believe, when Judy Williams was the, um, was the library director, so there is precedent, and it was right there. Uh, the, the other thing I'd like to point out is that we don't think it would cost a huge amount more money to readjust the design of the park. And the last thing I'd like to point out is that I am not aware of the amount of land that the. Archaeological dig is going to be done on, I don't know, Andrew or you. And I don't know whether it goes under that graded roadbed that has, has already been put down there for the new St. Mark's street.
Mr. Miller has his hand up, he's probably the most knowledgeable.
Mr. Miller, I'm going to allow you to talk.
Hi, Select Board, thank, thank you for recognizing me outside of public comment, I just wanted to offer a, a brief remark. As a friend to the Select Board, I've been helping you make a decision about going forward with the roadway work. And that is that I don't think there's any guarantee that what the Archaeological Consulting Service, that St. Mark's has. Agreed to hire, that, that what they will find will be confined to the boundaries, you know. Developed by an engineer and laying out a roadway in a park, in other words, there, you have no guarantee, I, I, I would obviously hope that. Um, whatever is found, or if anything is found in that land, would be, you know, very close to the walls of the old burial ground. But you have no guarantee that. There might not be findings that suggest further investigation is warranted, and so what I, I feel concerned about for you is that if you decide to go ahead with the roadway. And the dig is done in the park area and it implicates land to the north of that, then you find yourself in this very difficult situation. Where you've got a paved road over something that now state statute. Obligates you to then to remove the road and to keep digging, so I, I, I would suggest that you would be safest. To postpone the road work, and I understand the, the imperative to get the, you know, the contract and to fulfill the contract and get the road work done. And I, I really appreciate that, and I, I feel bad suggesting otherwise. Um, but I think the safest course of action for you is to allow the archaeological consulting company to do their dig. And to make sure that, in other words, it doesn't. Need by, by state statute, because state oversight is going to be implicated in this project going forward. That it doesn't suggest a dig further north than you would like, and that I would like frankly. Into the roadway and even into the parking lot, and so to avoid making what would be, I think, a very problematic mistake. I, I would urge you to take the six to eight weeks that apparently the dig is going to take and to allow that to play out before taking a further decision. Thank you so much, and I'm sorry, I wasn't expecting to speak tonight, but I hope that made some kind of sense.
Great sense, I'm really glad you did.
Kevin, can you hear me?
Yes.
Kevin, any further information about when, when the work will begin?
Uh, the last time I, I talked to the CFO of St. Mark's, Rob Kuklovich. He suggested that they were, you know, trying to, to act with all due speed, and it was simply a matter of getting the state permits. See, that's the issue that you have to consider, is that there are state permits involved with this. So as soon as the consultant pulls the permits, there's going to be state oversight. And what I worry about for you is if the state oversight, if the archaeological expert gets on scene, right? And starts digging in the park area and says, well, maybe we find nothing, or insignificant. Artifacts, and those are collected, and the archaeologist says, I am satisfied that there are no burials. In this area, or there are maybe some close to the walls, or whatever the case may be, and then you're done and you can move forward, but if. Uh, and I don't, you know, I hope this doesn't happen, but if the archaeologist comes on site and says, wow, there's a lot of stuff here. And it implicates land further to the north than we would like, in the roadway area, even into the parking lot. Then you're kind of in a, between a rock and a hard place with regard to the state. And so I, I think, as painful as it is that the six to eight weeks. Um, that apparently, you know, this dig is going to take, and it's going to, again, it's going to be determined by how quickly they can get the permits. I know that St. Mark's was very committed, because I, the day after the historical commission received the letter from St. Mark's. I was on the phone with Rob at St. Mark's, and he was asking me information, and I provided as quickly as I could. To facilitate them moving forward as quickly as possible, they want to get it done, and they want to do a good job, and I, 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 I can't applaud them enough. Um, for the decision they've taken to do this investigation, wha- again, what I worry is that if you go forward with the road right now. Before the results of the dig are in, you may be sort of, pardon the pun, digging a hole for yourselves that I don't want to see you go down. And so, again, I could be wrong about this, but that's my, my best. Advice that I can offer, and, and I'll, I'll sign off, and thank you again so much.
Can I just ask Karen a question? So. Is there enough work in the bid to continue on Main Street and the other areas down Correville? That, that are part of that bid, that if we waited six to eight weeks, then it's not problematic?
I'm likely the contractor is going to do what he can now, and it, you know, when he has an opening, and then he has to stop and not go back till next year. Or if we just say, all right, cancel it, we'll rebid it with the next time we drop through, I don't think that's going to be the problem.
Can you have that conversation with him though, overtly, and just make sure?
Yes, but I need to know exactly what we want to tell him.
Wish you, I think, what Chelsea said, can he basically turn his attention to downtown, right? Stop St. Mark's Park, no Deerfoot Flag, right, just do the, the one that everybody agrees with, which is finishing the downtown project for now. Until we can give him further guidance.
And during that time, Kathy, will we have a conversation regarding the land swap if we are going to take the time?
Gives us time to.
My question to downtown, we're talking about, this is the. Park Street, okay, parks, so yeah, going eastward, and then what, also south on eighty-five?
Yeah.
Okay. And the idea is that the, the, it benefits the contractor, the town, they do it in a coordinated fashion, so like. Even they go out, they do all in one time, et cetera.
Um, Ms. Burns, we already have. A while, so let's go to, so, Mr. Grant, are you?
Oh, yeah, Grant, Grant, ten fifty five road, a member of the St. Mark's group, but speaking of. Um, yeah, Mr., uh, well, I want to thank you first of all for this, the conversation, I think it's really great. Especially this far as having options and just the swap. And Mr. Miller really hit on a lot of my, my points, but I, I just wanted to say that I share his concern that you go through with. Such a irrevocable decision as paving, going forward, paving the road for the dig. Um, this complete, then, you know, you, they happen to find hundreds of native graves there or something like that, you know, you never know. When they did the great ground, they did the radar in the older area grounds in two thousand and six, they found seven hundred unmarked graves. That were not previously done, but. Uh, but if you, if you go forward that, that then.
Um, Ms. Burns, we already, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me better this time?
Yes, much better.
Okay, good, so I have a quick question and then a comment. St. Mark's has already been using the parking area that is on town land. Given that this is currently a construction site, is there any liability issues for the town with that parking area being used now?
So I think I know the only town land. Just correct that on the only, is the, is the butt end of St. Mark's Street, right, so there's not parking there. The, the parking that you've seen, and I agree, it is a little bit. Concerning, you know, weekends when there have been like big lacrosse games.
They were there today, there was about fifteen cars there today.
Well, that's where, that's, we would like to make it town, but it's not, so it's theirs, so as. I think, you know, the point you're making is that there's a little bit of disconnect between. Only recognize that's potentially sensitive and then wanting to spend, pursue permits to do archaeological. Exhibition there, but on the other hand, having, you know, SUVs parked there. For extra parking, but it's, but we don't own this land. So I don't know what.
I, I'm confused. I thought from the maps that we had seen on this area and who owned what. That. The property that is the old road is owned by the town. Going into the property that is becoming the parking lot for St. Marks. And then the property that is the, becoming the new road and the property that's the. Supposed park is owned by St. Marks. And that's why there was a question about the new roadway being public or a public roadway. Because it wasn't owned by the town.
This is where the best way to look at this is plan. The color, you know, the color coded version of the plan, you know, that's the best way to illustrate. We'll just take a while to find this, but. I am pretty confident, and again, I think Mark struck this at that. What'd you say was correct this again? Okay.
So Patty, you've got a lot of degree of confidence at this table that those cars were parked on St. Marks.
So even though it is a construction site being run by the town of Southborough and paid for by the town of Southborough, that is not a liability issue?
We don't own the land.
We don't own the land. What she's saying, you know, we got whatever from this and they were. So it's not an active construction site right now. So we do believe we'll find as far as that question goes.
Okay, so I guess my comment is that I want you to please remember. The taxpayer money should not be spent on private property. And if any of the roadwork is on property not owned by the town, which I believe it is. I do not support in any way, shape or form, spending any more taxpayer money. Do a land swap the way it should have been done in the first place and then come talk to me.
And that's what's on the table right now.
That would be nice.
58 Glad Road. I'm actually glad that that meant the Patty just mentioned the parking lot. I guess I was shocked by how awful it looked and surprised that the town would allow. Or even in maybe there was discussions with St. Marks about what they planned to do with that property. I don't see SUVs there. I saw limo liners, I saw coach buses. And not just on weekends, but also like in the afternoon games. And that's our town center. So maybe I wasn't paying attention, but St. Marks owns a lot of land. And I wonder why would they want to park their buses in our town center? And I just hope that maybe if there's a discussion about land swap, maybe discuss with them about like, you know, maybe those buses could be parked somewhere else. I understand parking lots of people have to park. I wanted to correct something that was brought up at town meeting. There was some misinformation given by actually a number of the public, so I'm not going to fault him. About what permits and stuff were in place. The comment made was that St. Marks had all its proper permitting. And I wanted to point out the permitting that is not in place. So we've already mentioned that the planning board moving the roadway, et cetera. You know, this project wasn't brought to the planning board. The project also wasn't, was not brought to the Conservation Commission. Under 174135 Stormwater Erosion Control. There's an exemption, St. Marks is not town owned. And it should, and the roadway is, triangle is not on a public way. So it should have gone to the Conservation Commission for permitting under stormwater erosion. We have to remember also that St. Marks is a scenic road. It came into play in the late seventies. I'm not sure if it was 76 or 78. And so there were public shade trees that were removed. St. Marks kindly provided some burial photos, I think to the St. Marks group, Triangle group. And there's clearly about at least maybe three public shade trees that were moved, removed. Being that it's scenic road, that should have gone to the planning board. There was also a very small stone wall that was removed. And again, this is on a scenic road that should have gone to the planning board. So I think if, as a town, especially somebody sitting on a permitting board. We wouldn't allow this from any developer that would come forward and skip all these various. You know, checks and balances that we have. So I would just say. You know, that I think Kathy, even I were talking about, just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should do it. Just because we spent the money, I guess, I feel like maybe we shouldn't do it. It is how I'm feeling. I just wanted to also mention, I spoke to an arborist, as you know, is sort of. You had asked me to reach out about some tree ward and stuff with arborists. She happened to mention that St. Marks has an arborist and so does stay, by the way, and they have beautiful trees. And one thing that if we had a town arborist, our arborist could speak to their arborist about maybe what they intended to do with that land. I don't think we have any say in it, you know, because there's a land swap, it would be their land. But I really hope that if they're going to park limo liners and coach buses in a parking lot in our town center. That they're going to put like trees or something around it. Maybe they have a nice plan. I think that would be a little easier for us to digest if we knew that. So simply because they don't have its permitting in place, they skip the process, we skip the process. Several boards were not included in this process. I wouldn't support the project moving forward. Talking about the roadway project.
Well, this was. So one for, I don't know about the. Condom storm water requirements. But there's stormwater calculations that are on these plans that are tied into. Drainage component to it. And then on the scenic road issue, right, that would be initially, if there are trees within the public way. Abutting is scenic road, right? That are being considered for removal. And then. The trees that were taken down were not within. Public way.
At the road.
Okay, yeah. The trees that were in the public way or in Marlboro Road. Did have, did have hearings. And they were pretty lengthy hearings and some of the trees were removed. And no, this were in the situation that we're in, right? There is, there are two huge, there are piles of dirt, right? So the reason why I don't want to just say, okay, stop all work. One, three reasons, one, it looks extremely ugly. Two, no, you lose the value of the work that you've already done. Three, just abandoning this and saying, okay, St. Marks, that's, that would increase. The number of. Parking vehicles on that land, right? St. Marks controls it, right? So that's the thing that they're trying to do is to get more control over this property, which puts the. Library and the old burial ground is a unique space to try to get more control over it and more defined. Park concept there is a more community driven concept.
I had to guess, I would bet St. Marks hasn't given a lot of thought as to where they park stuff necessarily. You know, saying to them, if you had a better place to park it outside, but they probably would say, I've never thought about it. So it's nothing wrong with asking them. But I, I think we may have gotten to. Except for your concern about the contract, but I think we dealt with that. Maybe you've got a consensus, which is we just stop for now, wait for the archaeological study to be done. Work on the land swap, right? And reconvene real quick, expand the working group charge to include. Possibly the fourth person, open space person officially, right? We will, Bill Science is already on it. You got that one, right? You got Marguerite on it, she's got library covered. Give you guys time to, to, to work on the.
Well, then you probably got to have that as a dedicated agenda item, you know, consideration of.
Which you do on the 14th.
Yeah.
Would you, can Andrew work on a charge to bring back Andrew with what you're looking to do?
Just to tell me some self deprecation, the last time I did this, it didn't turn out to be roundly successful, but I'll try.
But you know what, again, I can't think of anything that usually just passes the floor. So I would expect some level of discussion, but at least there's a starting point.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think we've kind of talked about who we're looking to have on it. So I think that piece is easy.
Well, actually, the first person with the charge, there is a difference between, remember there are a couple generations of that.
It's a great starting point.
What? Yeah, we'll go back to the first question.
That's one question. John Reiter, 48th Road. Has it been a requirement for the, is the land swap a condition precedent in this? Negotiation between St. Marks and town? And if not, has the proposal ever been brought to the town and simply. Purchase the land that needs to make this park?
So that hasn't happened. The conversation just wants, hope it's not happening. We've got a license agreement in place that allows each entity to use others' land. And we had a article that was on the warrant for the town meeting that you just attended. To basically change that to easements, virtual easements that was voted down. So we have not talked about the land swap and what we talked about in our last.
The only reason I'm bringing up is Stephen went over comments of parking. It's an interesting framing to St. Marks that it really is, it's the center of the town. The impression that is made for all those visitors, for those visiting St. Marks. And would it be in the town's best interest to purchase that land outright and perhaps offer?
Yeah, but the land that she's talking about is what they're going to end up with. So that's not, so they, that's the land they're going to use. So, so we hear this. So is everyone in agreement that we're going to stop until we get the study results in? So we know what to do with that. And just going to bring a charge back on the 14th as far as expanding the working group that we're getting voted on. And Karen will work with the contractor to basically make sure that it's clear. We don't want to do more work on the road part of it. Instead, we want to focus on the Main Street and Corvettale pieces of it. Fair enough?
I think so.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
And let's take it on some part.
Okay. Mutant Street, Karen. So I think this was pretty straightforward. This has been planned for a while, Caprica's. Better this approve this. It's telling me we approved the article to fund this. It's going to be bonded. She is, I think, pretty much ready to go to get this done, to give some water pressure on the street. The actual bid, yeah, yeah, it came in much less than what had been set aside. You can see the business. The actual bid is a lot, is less than what got approved by town meeting. So there's cushion there as far as other things go. So I think this was ready to be approved. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead. I moved that we approved the Mutant Street bid to Olivera Construction Company. For the lowest bid of $1,487,000 to, sorry.
Okay. The Perry report also recommended the award of subject to Olivera providing a site specific health and safety plan trenching. Something responsible with their OSHA violations.
Karen? Yes, and we can just do that and see if we'll get it from them before that.
Sorry to get into this. Okay. So then the motion.
So it doesn't mean then to basically make it subject to, yeah. To an OSHA. Sorry, I am, I don't know what hour it means. Thank you. Okay, so I removed my other bid for whatever. I had a bid, I said bid. Yeah. Okay, so I moved that we approve. The lowest bid for Olivera Construction Company. For $1,487,255 with the caveat. That they do site specific health and safety plan trenching.
Second.
Right to the, thank you. All right. Karen, you got two approved projects. Okay, next one is. This will be your 23 board committee appointments update.
Real quick and easy, this is just a draft in your package to let you know where, you know, where we are with what's been coming in. From, from board and committee members who are reappointed this year. So it's, it's still rough. And we'll be, we'll be refining that over the course of the next couple of weeks. Since you've got a more finished product for you on the 14th.
So capitals all being, has to be all reappointed?
Capital all must be reappointed because they're still under the的状态.
Kathy, can we ask Ms. Luttrell while she's sitting here, she's on our list? Are you still interested in Metro West Regional Collaborative? Thank you. Figured I'd, you know, might check one off. Okay, thank you.
Anything else as far as future appointments? So for the ones that we haven't heard from yet. Are we reaching out to them with their chair copy again? And I mean, we have a decent amount of vacancies.
And that is, that's updated as of the packet.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And then just, I mean, we have a lot of vacancies. On here, so do we have a plan yet for? What we're going to do with that?
We have to advertise for the, you know, we'll be advertising for the vacancies.
Yeah.
And trying to get in, putting the sale to work. Trying to find, find people to fill vacancies. In our last meeting, we also talked about there is a vacancy for M A P C, right? I don't know whether we're playing or us. Okay.
On your list too?
I think you took care of that one, didn't you? No?
Because I thought what we talked about in the last meeting, to see if the planning board was at their step.
Correct.
But maybe you were in the audience and we thought you were listening and thought we would. Here for what we, for hoping you might want to do, which is. Handle that one.
The larger M A P C.
Okay.
There we go, we like those answers.
All right. Any other questions? Nope, nope, okay, next. Discussion of the tree ward position for this for your 23rd. So this, this is where we stand. So this is again, remember Chris has agreed to. These people are in June 30th, right? So on the 14th, you're probably going to have to make a decision about, you know, what you want to do after July 1st. But Mark is in the middle, he and Vanessa are gathering information from other towns. They've got a set of questions out on the server to, to see what other towns are doing. Deb has talked to the professor that she knows at UMass, so we want that information also. So we're in the midst of trying to get information to make a coherent decision. At least start talking about it more on the 14th. So we're not going to discuss this aside tonight, it says, we need information.
Do we know if the, the current tree warden would be interested in extending task 630?
I think the current tree warden is, is interested in continuing in the position. But we'd like to understand what the structure is going to be before committing to it.
We don't have a budget. We're on stake.
You don't have a stake?
We don't have a budget.
We don't have a budget.
So unless that's going to come out of true money, which is.
That's awesome. The arborist and.
And he's right, understood.
And and hoping also on the fourteenth, we'll have some progress on a process that may make that.
Because that's what Ms. Boucher is working on with um, Mr. Twelve as far as stimulating that process. So moving parts, because they'll come together. We'll know one fourteen, but we did keep in mind that we've got to do something um for April J thirty, even sticker. Yeah. Okay, all right. Um. I'm sorry.
Previous slide we're being, I think it was March or April, I believe you guys had mentioned. Or I believe that you recognize the value of having a arborist as a pre-warden, and as you know, our our current pre-warden does not. Have those qualifications, so just as a new for process, I would. I think that's something that would be very beneficial to the town. And I think that should be, you know, a crucial element in deciding who are our pre-wardens to be.
So the questions that have been asked of the other towns are also being asked about arborists, what do you think is an arborist? Is it one person? So they're, that's the data they're trying to get as far as what others may do. All right, and so next, so liaison. Run the board to the private schools, and I'm including uh children's centers when I say private school. Um, so Saint Mark's face, so as we all know, Marty and um was a liaison for this whole term, I think. Close to. Personally, the town meeting where Ms. Fiore, um, article passed. He got elected right after that, so I'm pretty sure he did it. So um, I don't, I think he made great strides toward and for the relationship with the schools. So I don't think we should um let this lapse. I think we should um pick up. And whoever is appointed, you know, I think should ask him to go with that person over there and, you know, basically make the reduction. And make it a very smooth transition. So I I don't want this to wait, especially for what we talked about tonight. Um, so um, whatever your pleasure is fine, I would actually like to do it, and let me explain why. Um, this is something that I. I had tried to in part over the last few years, but I'm not sure I did a good job because it didn't happen. But I, and and I may be wrong, I don't think any developer you ever sat on a private school board. So I did for several years, and I also sat on the finance committee for the board. So I got a perspective as far as that goes, and I think I understand pretty well how the boards think. I know who composes the members of the board. They're usually, they're big boards, by the way. It's not just five people that I, and when I was on the third. Um, and so I I think there might be um a a way to even expand the relationship. Um, beyond what we've done, takes, take where Marty is and we go further. So I'd like a shot at doing that uh for a while and and see where it leads. Um, just because I there, there's, there's a different way, I think, with your coaches that might even expand um the relationship and the benefits. Mutual benefits for us and the schools.
And certainly support.
Lisa?
Absolutely, not me. No, when I know you've talked about it for a long time, Kathy, so I would be supportive of that as well.
Chelsea?
I'm supportive.
I move that we appoint Kathy to or Ms. to be a liaison for the board to the private schools, including women's center for children, Fay School in Saint Mark's. Okay. On the favor?
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Uh, okay, I think we're there, right? So any more public comment that we see, hand up. Hand up. Friends, we are.
Hi, I'm sorry about this, given the late hour, but I actually have uh three questions on three different topics. Uh, first, could you please tell us whether the town of Southborough is currently paying the salary of police chief? And if so, why has he not been working the last few months? And is that situation, i.e. payment of a non-working employee, expected to change?
So the answer to the first question is yes, it's being paid, and we are not able to discuss the last two.
Okay. Second question, I noticed that a number of flags were placed in the old burial ground this past weekend. These flags, particularly one, but placement of all, have been controversial for some time. Was formal permission sought to have these flags placed in the old town's old burial ground? And if not, I respectfully request that they be immediately removed.
So let us know which flag she's talking about, more people from there or circumstances.
I'm assuming it was the veterans that put them there. Um, I'm assuming, again, I don't know for sure, but I'm assuming it was a up flag that there was question on last year. And um, the board took no position.
So why were they allowed to put them back without permission?
Because, again, I. I would assume it was because they weren't asked to be removed last year. Eddie, I I I don't know that, you know, there's flags in all the cemeteries. I don't know that the veterans specifically asked. You know, whether they could put the flags up. It's just always been assumed, I guess, that um the flags. Out of respect for those uh within the cemetery that the flags are there.
Well, that is a different cemetery than the rural cemetery where there are veterans that may have served under some of those flags. That's a very different cemetery. And unless there is specific permission granted by the overseers of the of the old burial ground to fly those specific flags, again, I respectfully request they be removed.
Noted. Third.
Third. Our DPW superintendent's employment contract is up for renewal at the end of June. Could you please discuss the status of this contract? Why does it need to be done in executive session when the salary is paid for by taxpayers? And considering the substantial missteps made by her and the department under her direction, I certainly urge you to consider public comment when negotiating this contract.
Andrew?
Um. We have had these discussions in executive session consistent with the fact that as with other negotiations with um counterparties where the public records law commits us to deliberate about negotiating strategy in executive session because doing so in an open session may have a detrimental impact on our negotiating position. But again, Mark, I think you could correct me if I'm wrong, but that ultimately votes about whether to enter into in any contract, including employment contracts with department chairs that we negotiate. Those ultimate votes are conducted in a open session.
And those agreements are public documents.
Correct. After the agreements have been negotiated and executed, they are public documents.
So when you are voting on that in an open session, public comment is not really um worthy of anything because we have no idea what you've personally negotiated with that contract holder. Is that correct?
I don't say that. What, what, is it the agreement that's a public document is what we've negotiated? So that's a.
But the agreement isn't a public document until you, after you have voted on it and approved it. So before you have voted on it and approved it, the public has no knowledge of what is in that document. So my question goes back to, is that part of a town bylaw that requires net negotiation be done in executive session?
There's no requirement to do it. We choose to do it because we think it's appropriate to do it that way.
As permitted under the open meeting law.
And perchance the taxpayers who pay that salary don't feel that is appropriate and feel that public comm- comment and discussion should be warranted. Um, how is that done?
The public comment is always available when you know something is coming up to be discussed. So there's no prohibition from anyone submitting any comment or information that they believe uh we should consider when we are about to um consider a contract.
So I guess, let me make this totally clear. I think that you should be considering all that has gone on in the last couple of years regarding the DPW, its department, its lack of oversight and its non-accountability for taxpayer funds being spent when you consider that contract in potential increase in salary and benefits.
Noted again, and I also forwarded your email that you sent to me to everyone so they could hear your comments and read them. So we have absolutely read what you sent.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, um, okay, so now I'm going to officially adjourn this meeting.
You were adjourned into executive session.
A journey, this, I moved, I moved to adjourn this meeting into executive session. We've got. Yeah. Sorry. Um.
Thank you all for coming. Have a good night.
Thank you guys. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Bye, maybe. Bye, Dad. Okay, so I move to um go into executive session to the board. We'll enter into executive session per M G L chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one. And we will not return to open session for the following items, an update of contract negotiation.
Okay, we're still in open session.
Okay, so I stop?
No.
I have never done this, so.
I know. You're very nervous.
You did. Okay, so. So I keep going, I'm going to start. Okay, an update of contract negotiation from the DPJAGA superintendent, exemption to a strategy session in preparation with contract negotiation with non-union personnel, exception to, and review and approval of May seventeen, two thousand and two, executive session minutes, exemption seven. So here we go.
So you moved seconded?
You do roll call vote to go into.
Okay, so who seconded?
I did.
Sam, so it's seconded. Okay, roll call vote to go into executive session. Andrew.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
Chelsea.
Hi.
Kathy, yes.